This meeting to order of Ventura County Board of Supervisors for September 9th, 2008. Roberta, will you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Chinese.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here. Supervisor Flynn is at a Chinese Trade Seminar today, so he won't be attending this meeting. All right, we have a moment of affirmation from Pastor Rob McCoy. Pastor?
I come to you as a pastor at Calvary Chapel, Thousand Oaks, and also as a Ventura County Chaplain, and it's an honor to be here today. I'm grateful for your service to this community. What was mindful on my heart as I came to share with you was the idea of representing the community as public servants and having to present what you perceive as your truth and to work it into the field of ideas. And I know at times I can be trying and difficult, and especially having opposing points of view. And I like the idea of what my Lord says, that to speak the truth in love. The idea that we both have opposing opinions and we're seeking the best for the community, but to speak that truth in love. It says in Corinthians that we could have the tongue of angels, but have not love. We're clinging symbols and sounding brass. It's been often said that people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And so I just encourage you as our supervisors to remain and work in a realm of civility towards one another, as you already do and continue to. I was thinking in regards to the Sermon on the Mount where the Lord said, and he quoted the commandment, "Thou shall not commit murder, but I say to you, if you say to your brother Raka or fool," Raka means stupid or empty head, or you say to him fool, you're in danger of the same judgment as murder. The Lord equated murder with the use of vile words towards another human being. And the idea means simply that you don't need a gun to kill somebody, your words will do just fine. If you were to say to a child growing up, if the parents were to say to that child, "You're stupid," that bullet goes right to the heart of the child. It's been said that sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me, and that couldn't be, there's not a greater lie, I don't think. Just continue to speak to one another and kindness. The proverb says, "A word fitly spoken is like apples of gold and settings of silver." And in today's economy, I think gold and silver are precious to everybody, as are kind words. It also says that a gentle answer turns away wrath. And I would just encourage you to remember one another's anniversaries and birthdays and successes, note them. Supervisor Parks, when I spoke here last time, he sent me just a precious thank you note administered to me. I appreciate that. And I see the civility on this board, and it represents our community well, and it blesses the heart of the Lord. And I'd like to pray for you all that that would be a continued spirit of encouragement to you. Lord, thank you for these men and women. Thank you for their faithful service to this community. Thank you for the kindness that they express to one another, that they represent you well and they represent this community well. Lord, may they continue to dwell together in unity, and as they work in the field of ideas, presenting their heart and longing to see truth expressed, I pray that they would love their neighbors themselves, and they would speak to one another in kindness and civility. And I ask your blessing upon them in all that they do and all that they say. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you very much.
Pastor, appreciate that. We'll now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Long, would you like to lead us?
The question I'd like to remember is about September 9th. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
We have a new upgrade in our software here, so put up with us a little bit till we figure it all out. But we got great training, didn't we?
Yes.
This is my bad. CS machine.
Okay. So we'll move on to our agenda review.
Yes, Chair Foy. On Consent Item 22, there's a revised board letter that you've been provided and has been uploaded. Item 27 on the agenda title only, it should read, "Recommendation of Supervisor Bennett to receive and file information regarding the Ojai Valley disaster preparedness drill on September 17th, 2008." That has also been updated on the web. Item 35, letters received from citizens have been provided to board members and posted to the website. And Item 42, there's a revised board letter, should read Supervisorial District 3. I believe it read District 5.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I should also mention, though, this is our first full electronic
That's right.
...agenda.
Yes.
Where everybody submitted everything electronically, and, you know, I think the only thing that would have to be provided at this point in time are things that need a specific signature. But good job, Roberta, and good job to our technical crews.
No, I think you're right. I mean, this really is, in a sense, a historic event for what they were able to do. It was back in 2005 that you started working on this, right? That you guys had all gone through this whole thing to build this whole SIRE program to give us this really cost-effective, efficient way of doing something, and it's, it sounds like it's, it's come to fruition. And today is the first time this is all done electronically. This is great. I mean, you think about when they gave me yesterday a whole scenario of how many thousands and tens of thousands of pages of paper that are copied in hours of time and, and energy of people moving stuff around. This is really, it's great to see. I know our whole county is looking at this effective, efficient thing that Marty's pushing very hard with and everybody, and this is just great to see. But I think also the efficiency, it makes it nice to have to do things electronically instead of the cumbersome way. I'm sure all the different departments, right? I think that everybody's excited about that. So that's, that's a great effort, and I know there's more to come, right? But I do appreciate, I think from an environmental standpoint, that we can say that tens of thousands of pages of paper and trees and everything else aren't killed for that, so that's wonderful.
And the other part is, is as we bring material in electronically, then we're able to archive it without using additional space, and we're able to archive it so that the public can more readily and easily research it. So it will be much easier for everybody to research topics that have occurred at the board as a result of that, so.
Yeah, there's no question. I'm, I'm excited to see the change that's coming on in the county and how the technology is coming in here to really make an effective, efficient use of time, materials, and everything else. So congratulations. All right, do we have a motion on this agenda?
Motion to receive the agenda as advised.
Second. Can't miss these big vote things here. All right. Okay, let's move to our consent agenda. You have any questions on that? Comments? I've got, I'd like to move, if possible, if we could move 14 off and talk about it. I don't know if anybody's here from the healthcare. We can probably put it off till later if nobody's here. If Mike is out there hiding in some room back in the corner. He's hiding.
I have a motion forward to move on the rest of the consent agenda following item 14.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There he is. Okay, we can vote on that, and then we can... All right, do you want to come up, Mike, and talk about it?
My question is, is you, you want 21 new positions. Is that right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And you're going to tell me how it's cost-effective to add the 21 positions versus what we're already spending?
Absolutely, yes, of course, Chairman Foy, board members, Mrs. Robinson. The 21 positions are actually intended to meet our increased demand and census at both hospitals. There's been a sustained about 18% increase, and we're really already staffing it, but less efficiently with more costly registry services. This way, we'll be able to use our own permanent folks and actually cut down on those expensive registry costs, so that will end up saving costs. At the same time, we'll also be able to generate some revenue. In Santa Paula in particular, we've been very conservative and circumspect in terms of adding staffing out there. I think that's helped us sustain financially out there. But we're at a point where our core census, our core staffing needs have risen, not just to meet fluctuations in census, but our core staffing needs have increased. And in order to meet also increased demand in the surgery department, which has gone up over 50%, we really need to add some staff out there so we can add those services. As well as in the physical therapy department, we have wait times that range from six weeks to four months. And so there's, there's a real need to add staffing out there, which will increase access, reduce costs, and actually generate some revenue.
Right, and there's no question that when you go, I know my knee when I had it done, waiting, you know, months to get your physical therapy, that's not a good situation. So, but if I look at these numbers, if you add these people, you're probably talking about a million and a half dollars worth of, by the time you add all the costs and everything else. So are you expecting that when you get rid of registry and everything else, that we're going to save that million and a half, or we're going to be, we're not saying, but we're going to be offset?
It will be more than offset, yes, sir.
It will be more than offset?
Yes.
And the revenue coming in?
Absolutely. Mostly in cost-saving, but in some revenue increase as well. And we also retain flexibility, simply because in nursing in particular, these are permanent positions. We still retain the right to reduce staffing when the census drops, so we still maintain that flexibility.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
I noticed that you've done a great job here. When I was here, when I first got here, it was about $5 million deficit in the system, and now you're down to 2.2, well, 2.2 million, and it's going lower, so I'd hate to see us run back that up, but I mean, you've done a great job with that. So that was part of my concern, is to get this to be a break-even situation.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
And comment on that.
Just ask one quick, and just want to be, be clear for the benefit of the public. So right now, we, we have to staff based on sort of the demand, the number of people that we have to staff. The question is, do we hire these registry people sort of on the spot that are more expensive, or do we finally now say, we know what, we have a better idea, and so we know how many employees we really ought to hire, and so as we spend, we're here, we're going to spend less there.
That's correct.
Good. Very good. Yes.
Well, and I appreciate having this dialogue. I think that the, as Mike said, the, in the Santa Paula model, we were very conservative as we opened the doors, and I think it's, it's now performing, and the demand is there, and, and I think that, as, as has been said, to go from what was a, a on-demand temporary workforce to a more permanent one that provides the timely care will serve us well in the model. So appreciate the work on it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, so I'll even make a motion then to accept number 14.
Second.
All right. There we go. What's that? It was approved? Okay. So why don't we then move on to our public comments? Pardon? We have speakers, that's where I got to push the speaker thing. And I see. We have, our first speaker will be Jessica Leon.
Is it okay if we all talk together, like I'll come up at once?
Sure.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Leon. I'm the Vice President of One Step Alavés, which is located in Fillmore. What One Step Alavés means is that it's, we're taking one step at a time to reach our goals. And what we are is a committee of youth determined, determined to make the lives of the teens, the teens in Fillmore better. For the last four years, we have worked hard to open a drop-in center where teens can feel comfortable and are able to receive the help they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Gonzalez. I am the Secretary for One Step Alavés in Fillmore. By being a part of Project Links, our youth committee was able to study about behavioral health research, which was needed to be done to come up with recommendations. We decided that we needed many things. We needed translation for all materials, clinicians who spoke Spanish, childcare for people who wanted to speak with a clinician, and finally, what we've put our energies into was a teen wellness drop-in center.
Hi, my name is Elia Salantundo, and I'm a member of the One Step Alavés in Fillmore. And I'm here to talk about the building on the highway. There is a large building on the highway that has many services for Fillmore. It's a place where youth and families can go for medical care and drug counseling. Behavioral Health is hiring staff for the program, and it will be soon up and running. The services will be, will be offered, but we want to be sure that they will, that they are fully used. We worked out a plan with Behavioral Health, and we think it will work. Thank you.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Nelson Medina. I am the Treasurer of the One Step Alavés. I'd like to talk about how in the upcoming weeks, you will be looking at the recommendations for the Mental Health Act, which part of this budget will be money to help us fund a drop-in center in Fillmore for our youth. This will be a multi, multi-funded facility, primarily supported by the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Ventura County, also working with the Public Health Services. As of now, we are actively seeking money and partners to fund the One Step Alavés Center. We have received many grants, such as from the Social Justice Foundation, the Women's Legacy Foundation, and also the Trinity Episcopal Church has donated, has given us, I'm sorry, some space for us to use. We joined with other nonprofit organizations, such as the Paradox Technologies Industries, which are giving, are providing us with staff members to work with us for three hours a day. They have also given us some computers and are also providing computer lessons for our The Public Health has provided the, all, some of these classes and given information about mental health to our youth in Fillmore. The city has also given us $25,000 to renovate a facility, and someone needs for improvement of the facility. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karina Sanford. Good morning. I'm the Public Relations Manager in Fillmore for the One Step. We just recently opened up the, the One Step Center on August 25th. It was very quiet, and we're just starting, and we're going to soon be advertising more to the community. We have an open invitations to all, we have open invitation to all the youth in Fillmore, ages 14 through 19. What we've done so far is that we've finally opened the drop-in center. We have homework help, we have counseling, we have nutritious, nutritious snacks, and we have just a comfortable place to relax for teens. And we also have two ongoing classes, yoga and nutritional classes. And also the counselors from the highway with the large building is, they're, they're soon going to be coming for presentations on behavioral health, individual and group counseling. We will soon be expanding to two side rooms at our center, and all of this is due to the support of Project Links, the support of Melanie Roy, and the staff of Behavioral Health and your support. And we just came to thank you for making this four-year-long dream a reality.
Wow. I'm impressed.
We thank you on behalf of the One Step Alavés. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Wow. You guys are doing a, I'm impressed. You guys have done a tremendous job. Well, thanks for coming and telling us about what you're doing. Anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you, and a thank you. And you always do a great job, Lynn, and, and working with these wonderful youth, and they, I must say, they are, they persevere, and they, and they don't take no, but they also come here to say thank you when they, in appreciation for the small steps that have gotten them to where they will be today with this, where they are today is the drop-in center. So thank you for all of your passion for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Wow, you are a great example of American youth. This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Thank you. Amardo? Ask Wes.
Yeah, that's our future right there. You know, lots of props to all of this. You may have read the editorial this past Sunday in the Star, put together by Dr. Dodge and Julie Medina. I want to talk to you about the Peace Jam, just to remind you that it's taking place the 11th, 12th, and 13th. It's this week. There'll be 10 Nobel Peace winners there, working with over 3,000 kids from all over the world. Six of our kids from our county have committed to working for the next 10 years to bring peace to our county. The idea is to get a billion acts of peace worldwide. In addition to that, our 35, 40 young kids at Cafe Ane are working on an anthology of writings, poetry, art, narratives, what we believe really sets young people free, the idea that writing, oral presentations, reading, and being able to analyze that material is what liberates you in this country. They're also going to learn the horrific lesson of trying to They're also going to learn the horrific lesson of trying to publish a book and then trying to sell it. So they're going to go from A through Z, attempting to write but also selling the book. The book is going to be a wonderful addition to anybody's library. It's going to cost us about $30 a book. So anybody that might want to help, this is the call-out. And we want to thank you very much for this consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's our last speaker. You were, you're on their list, but was that from before?
That was before.
That was before. Okay. All right. No other speakers? Nope? Okay. Then we will go to our board comments. Supervisor Long, would you like to start down there?
And welcome back. I know everyone had, I hope everyone had a nice break. I know, although we don't have board meetings, that we oftentimes spend, spend our time away doing lots of other community and focus issue agendas and conferences, and, but I hope you had a good break. I have a couple of things to touch on. One, to submit a list to ask the board to adjourn in memory of some folks who passed from the 3rd district. And I, I know that all of you receive, and have received over this period of time, the various budget updates that most of them just say, nothing, nothing, nothing's happened, which is, should be very frustrating, is very frustrating, I'm sure, for us and for our managers, as we're now approaching, I think, some critical times with the lack of having a budget where we are seeing concerns with, with, with our Medi-Cal bills and, and probably more so with some of our good private sector partners who, who do services quietly behind the scenes in our community that will start to feel the pinch of not having a budget. So it's, it's pretty disheartening, frankly, and, and disgusting. But the other thing I'd like to comment on is, in one week that I, that during the break, I did participate in a statewide Calafco conference. It was held in Universal City. And I, I bring it up because sitting on LAFCO, and, and as we know, in our county, LAFCO has, has really served a significant role in, I think, helping us to have this quality of life balance between some of our agricultural community, protection of open space, and, and what we have in this county. So it's always, I always enjoy the conference. I've been going for years. I chose this year not to run to continue to serve on the executive board for Calafco, though, so after eight years, I thought I'd served enough and stepped down from that. But I do intend to continue to be active with the Calafco Board. They, they have really moved the agenda, I think, to be at the table when it comes to discussions with the other large state associations on legislation that, that, that make a difference in both our, our protection of agriculture and open space issues. One of those pieces of legislation, and I'll provide to you, and I know you, you've all heard pieces of, if not know probably as, as well as I do, the, the challenges that are, will be coming to us as a result of SB 375, and this is the Steinberg bill. And it's the first real implementing bill that addresses the AB 32 climate change pieces and components, and, and it looks at sustainable communities in a holistic manner, and the bill is, is, well, it's on the governor's desk. It was supported by a broad coalition. There were, there were lots of, it, it kind of floundered for about a year and a half, and then there were some amendments made. So CSAC, the League of Cities, Calafco, the building industry, all signed on to this bill at the end of the day. And I'll pass it down, so you have a copy of it. It, it, it does propose to, to bring together the sustainable communities model in the sense of looking at emission reduction targets, be it carb through the transportation sector and the air pollution quality control districts, in addition to connecting them to the land use decision-making. So that communities will be challenged to have regional dialogue between these, these, not just jurisdictions, but these governing policies of air quality, land use, and transportation when it comes to future designing of communities, general plans, transportation corridors, all of those nexus connecting policies and issues. So this is the first piece of legislation. All, all signs are that it will be signed by the governor. Steinberg is, has already said that there will be following legislation for the implementing pieces of this. But I'd like to bring it to, I brought it today so that, and I, I plan to bring it to APCD and to the Transportation Commission on Friday. And I would just provide it to the CEO, and, and I think we need to start having internal dialogue between the executive directors and the, and the executive officers of, of the Transportation Commission, the APCD District, our planning folks, and the Regional Energy Alliance, because all, all of roads cross and will connect, and through this legislation, frankly, will be forced to connect. It will have incentives to do so, both in transportation dollars, and it will have significant disincentives if you don't do so down the road. So that's as much as I want to say about it, but I, I think that it is a significant piece of legislation. Not everybody agreed with it. There's still some gnashing of teeth to go on. I think there is, as always, devil in details, and I think to have at least the parties in our local level having regional dialogue, they'll have the opportunity as the follow-on legislation comes around this framework bill, basically, to, to be able to reach what should be some common goals for the whole climate change challenges. So wanted to bring that to you. As I said, there was, even with Calafco, there wasn't total agreement on this, but there was majority agreement. So significant piece of legislation. And then, one other thing I'd like to mention, over the break, there was a tragedy up at Lake Piru. There was a gentleman, a father, from Los Angeles who was fishing with his family or, or, they were, they were at Lake Piru, and his daughter fell overboard, and he tried to rescue her and did rescue her, but in that, lost his life. And I bring this up because Lake Piru is, is a canyon lake, and there was frankly, there is no cell service in that lake area. And it did cause some anxiety. It, it didn't, there was response. As soon as the 911 alert went out, there was response. But the recovery effort on this, and this is why I bring it up, is because it was enormous in trying to really respond to this tragedy, to this family, and to the loss of this life. There were 16 divers from Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and our Ventura County Sheriff's Department, four Oxnard Police Divers, nine VCSD search and rescue support members, seven rescue boats, one West County Command Post was on alert. There were 60 head-sola searchers from the Jewish community in Los Angeles, American Red Cross, a helicopter, search and rescue. It was a tremendous response, and, and, and the victim was recovered. In talking with the sheriff over the period of time, I, I think everyone was sensitive to the community need and to respond to it, and they did just a yeoman's job in, in doing so. And in that, and, and it's not something we haven't been aware of, but it is something that ISD and the sheriff and, and I will continue to work on to identify some resources to see what we need to do to get up there, the infrastructure, if it's a repeater tower or whatever it's called, so that we can fill the gap that's up there at Lake Piru. So wanted to thank the sheriff and all the teams who responded to this, and in appreciation. They were very, one, they did an excellent job and very sensitive to the family. It was a tragedy. And I think that that wraps up my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that is a tragedy. Supervisor Park?
Thank you. It's been a nice break, and I'm glad to be back. Few things over the break, Supervisor Long didn't mention the significance of Senate Bill 375, Steinberg's bill, that will help implement AB 32. I was able to moderate a session between the Air Resource Board and SCAG on AB 32. Interesting things that we hear that other communities are doing. We get in the front voluntarily, helping to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and the carb will definitely give us credit for those early action items. So I think that's important. It was really heartening to hear what some other communities are doing. For example, the mayor of Riverside talked about how they have been able to use some air quality funds to provide free transit passes to all their city employees. Maybe that's something we can look at as we have an air pollution control board today. We discussed that possibility also. Councilwoman Janice Hahn from Los Angeles also talked about the efforts they've done, which are very significant at the, at the port of Los Angeles. So just seeing what other communities are doing were very helpful. And while there is some reticence and concern about exactly what we need to do to meet these goals, I think getting out early is going to certainly have tremendous benefits. The sooner we move on these things, the less impact will be in the long run. So looking forward to seeing what Ventura County can do. Additionally, some other events that have occurred, we had Nordstrom opening in Thousand Oaks. Oh, well, if you missed it, you can still come shop and spend locally in our town. We also had, finished up the Ventura County Fair, and one of my constituents, Mrs. Jim McCarg, won for first place Peach Jam, and I brought you all a Peach Jam. Isn't that nice? And it is really. I've got one for you too, Marty. All right. And I, I think that, that was pretty much the, the most exciting things that occurred over the break. I do also ask that we close in memory of a few people on this list, and I'd like to call out three of these individuals. One very special person in our community, and really throughout the county, is Mary Claire Slice, who died over our break. Wonderful woman, and was so involved in so many different things in our community, starting off with a recycling program that she ran, MO, POW MIA Remembrance that she put together, PTA meetings, and working her way up, got involved in AAUW, was their past president throughout her 39 years in Thousand Oaks, dedicated to the community. She worked in such community activities as the Caneo Futures Foundation, Caneo Friends Group, Many Mansions, Senior Concerns, Chamber of Commerce. She brought the Jazz to the Caneo Valley through KCLU, Caneo Free Clinic, City of Thousand Oaks Grants Committee, most recently, the Ling Ranch Park Committee. She was also the third woman to join Rotary in Thousand Oaks and really kind of opened the doors for, for women in Rotary in Thousand Oaks. Also wanted to mention the loss of Edward Skee. This is the father of Roy Skee, who's on our Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Assistant to the Executive Director in Cosco, and, and in his own right, a very strong community member, involved in the Caneo Valley Historical Society, and with our Stagecoach Inn reenactments, which if any of you ever have the opportunity, it is a wonderful event. You go through the Stagecoach Inn, and all throughout the Inn, they have enactments going on of, of things that occurred back in the 1800s. It's very, very nice, and they're all in, in full dress. It's nice to see. But he also documented, did a video documentation through interviews of all the founding fathers and mothers of Thousand Oaks that too will be very much missed. And then just a tragic death that we had in, along Highway 126, when a truck went out of control and killed a, a young Marine. The, the young man was 22 years old, Christopher Williams, and I know he is going to be very, very much missed by his family and friends. He was a, a student from Oak Park High School, and he, he really loved the Marines, so I'm thankful that he was able to achieve what he so much wanted to do. With that, and these others on the list, I'd ask that we close it on, and that completes my comments.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor. Bennett?
Well, it's great to come back to Jelly, so I really appreciate that. And I too hope everybody had, had a good break, and I know we have a very full fall ahead of us in terms of things that we have to do. I'd just like to comment quickly on the Steinberg bill that both Supervisors Park and Long have already commented on, and simply this, if it is implemented properly, and that's really going to be the key, I think it's a very welcomed leadership on the part of the state in an area that has been crying out for leadership in terms of moving forward. So I think the devil will be in the details, but I sure am, am hopeful that it, that'll get the job done for us. I'd like to point out that while we were on break, there was a article in the Ventura County Star, and it says, it's the Blue Ribbon Panel urges reform of California Foster Care System. And I just think it's something that we need to keep on our radar screen. This Blue Ribbon Panel was, it was made up of 42 experts in foster care, and they focused on the court system, not on the whole system, just on the court system. It's the first time the court system's ever been examined. But they've found some glaring deficiencies in terms of trying to properly take care of our children. There's only 150 attorneys and experts out there to, to work in this field, handle the cases through the whole state. So it's tremendous shortage in terms of people and full and part-time judges and commissioners working on foster care. The lawyers for the courts that are appointed by the courts are averaging 273 cases apiece, some of them as many as 500 to 600 cases in some areas of the state. So I certainly hope that we will lend our voice because of our concern about foster care to proper reform at the, at the court system. But while this reform is going through the process, this Blue Ribbon Panel did call out the, the importance of making sure that counties have adequate staffing of social workers for foster children, so that you don't, you don't stretch them so thin that the foster children are not getting the attention that they need. So I think that we certainly stack up better than most counties, but that doesn't mean that we should, should rest on that, that we probably still have much more that we could, we can do from the standpoint of foster care. And the final thing I'd like to do is ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I'd like to call out Virgil Rawlings-Bryan, U.S. Air Force and Tenure Administrative Assistant to two Ventura County Supervisors, and Chiki Maureen Callaway, worked for and retired from the Ventura County District Attorney's Office. And we also lost Jerry Green, Ventura County firefighter for 27 years, longtime member of the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. And they and everybody else on the list will be missed, and I always like to make sure that people that have retired from the county, there are many people here in the county that know who those people are, that they're alerted, hopefully, at this, this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I too would like to have the board adjourn in memory of this list, and this is my longest list ever. That's, that's difficult. It's a difficult summer for a lot of people in our district, so. Couple things regards to the budget. As Supervisor Long had talked about, it's a difficult time, difficult things. I think that as we continue down this path of where we're at, we have to be wise here at this county about how we spend our money, because we're not sure where that's going to come. And I know a lot of people are out there looking at how they can control their spending because... because we don't want to see layoffs if we can help it. And I know that we've done a good job to put our reserves in place and over the years. So, that's good to hear. We still have our prison issue going on that's coming and that's, you know, from a tax standpoint, when you figure somebody, one judge in a black robe can tell you that the state has to go out and spend $8 billion, that's quite a deal to us and especially in a time that we're at right now with probably another billion dollars a year to maintain those prisons. So, it's a difficult situation that we're in and so there's going to be a lot of things, I think, going on with that. Also out in our district, the Reagan Library is hosting their third annual American Support for the 9/11 Freedom Walk. That's for the 7th anniversary of 9/11 to honor the national tradition of remembrance of the lives lost at 9/11. And Simi Valley Days begin tomorrow out there. So, I'm sure there'll be all the parades and all the other things that are going on. So, and I also want to say thank you to our GSA who refinished our, and finished up our, whatever, our DIAS up here. I guess it's been 30 years since they've redone that. So, I guess we got a lot of use out of that, good use of taxpayer dollars. So, anyway, thank you for making this very nice and for upgrading our computer system and giving us some new challenges to work with. So, anyway, so thank you. Those are my comments. All right. Why don't we move on to our regular agenda? So, we got a little bit of time. Behavioral Health, number 36.
Good morning Chairman Foye, members of the board. And this is Robinson. This is Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Before you, for item 36, there are a number of recommendations incorporated in this. One of them is for two positions for psychiatric social workers for our school-based programs, one at Phoenix School and one at Junipis Sarah in Ventura. The other's for a Community Services Coordinator for the Mental Health Services Act. All of these positions are fully funded either by MHSA or Medi-Cal or the SB 90 program. The other is to increase our agreement with MAXIM Healthcare Services. This is service that we use to hire clinical personnel. This is important because as we've had difficulties with hiring positions for MHSA, we want to make sure that those positions are full and that we're implementing those programs. And then we have two agreements with physicians. One's a child psychiatrist, one's an adult psychiatrist who's going to be working with our ConRep program and our older adult program. And both of these physicians are being paid in keeping with what we're paying other physicians and with market, according to what the market. So...
So, all these positions you say are funded?
Yeah, the only, the doctor physicians and the MAXIM, there's some net county cost involved in those, but that was accounted for in our budget already.
It was.
Yes.
Do we, anything that you have coming here, do you see where the state is going to affect some of this? I know you said Medicare, which isn't going to affect the state, but in budget could affect this situation?
For the positions that we're talking about today, the two psychiatric social worker positions are funded by, it's a mandated program for IEP-related services and that's funded through SB 90, Medi-Cal and EPSDT. What isn't funded through Medi-Cal would be covered by SB 90. So, those are fully funded. And then the other one is the MHSA position that's fully funded through the Mental Health Services Act.
Okay.
Move the approval?
We have a motion in a second. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go to the Audit Controller, 37.
Good morning Chairman Foye, members of the board. This is Robinson. We're asking today for your board to adopt an updated internal audit charter. The initial charter was approved by your board 14 years ago. That's a long time ago with a lot of changes in the county. So, the technical code section updates and reflecting best practices has modified this charter. Do you have any questions?
Is there any questions on this?
I guess, well, I just looked at the, under the Authority Section when it talks about these designations took place in 1955. Just question that, you know, we've, that's been looked at in all of this and the designate, there's no question of, or changes desired or the process?
The board can review that at any time it wants. And that was one of the changes that was put in here from the first presentation and it was dealing with, the board made that designation in, at that period of time and the board can revisit its designation.
Anytime. Okay.
What does that one sentence say at the, and we talk authority in the end of the first paragraph, "As such, the Audit Controller has direct access to the board's supervisors." What does that mean?
That means that I'm reporting the audits to you directly.
Reporting when you do the audits to us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. How does that, how does that work with the CEO's office?
The CEO's office gets copied on all the audit reports as well.
Okay. But is the, who's, I guess, who's directing what audits you're doing? Is it CEO's office or your office? That's where I guess I'm trying to figure.
The internal audit focus is with my office. And what we did was add a paragraph here to ensure that we're not taking away anything, any authority that the CEO, now that it is CEO, not CAO, which was in 1994, that those changes also took place in here. The CEO retains their authority to review all operations under your board's direction as well.
Right. Okay. Supervisor Park, you have a quick?
That was the same question I had. I see the CEO is kind of the administrator for the board supervisors. So, going through the CEO through to the board is generally how we do the process.
Right.
And I imagine we'll continue that.
That's the same thing you're...
We definitely send our audit plan out every year and your board also is asked to have inputs to that audit plan and we coordinate with the CEO's office to make sure that whatever plans they have, that we're not stepping on each other's toes and coordinating our efforts with the operational reviews that they may be performing and the internal audits that we're performing.
Right. It would just seem that the CEO who's overseeing all would have probably a view that would want to say, working with the auditor, we need to go look at this situation where I think you guys would work together to try to do that.
We do that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that goes on. Okay. You have a comment?
Well, I do think that since you've asked the question on this, I look back at the old language and it did identify at that point in time that the auditor, of course, has direct access to the board's supervisors. Well, there's a difference, I guess, between direct access to the board supervisors, which frankly, everybody has, versus procedurally how we want to handle internal audits and whether or not with what the board has delegated to the county executive officer, if they want the review of the audits at administrative level prior to them coming to the board, if that's a, if that's a direction, then we need to think about that and be sure that that's clear. If in fact, we want to do something different, then, then the language as it stands is fine. So, we can meet that.
Well, I would think that we want to be, you know, what the auditor's doing is her responsibility to do, but I would think as you're our administrator for the board, we'd want you to review those audits before they came to us. I mean, that's my thought. I don't know where the rest of the would stand, but I mean, that's why I think we have you there. And then working, you two working together saying, here's our audit, here's what we've got. And that's something I would think.
Would you want to do an adjustment to the wording here to reflect that?
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was curious about what that does. Yeah, I mean, I would like to have everything at least be vetted through the CEO's office to know what, what's been done. I mean, does that make sense to you?
Quite frankly, it doesn't.
Oh, really?
I have an independent voice to you. I do coordinate with the CEO's office in advance of auditing, but once the audit has been completed, the field work has been done, the report has been written, it is issued by my office officially. We do coordinate in the county administrative manual today to ensure that the CEO follows up on any of the findings that we may have with a department and makes sure that the department addresses those findings. And that procedure has recently been strengthened also to ensure that CEO staff is welcomed for any entrance and exit conferences that we may have with an audit in a department.
Okay.
So, that coordination is already in place and it's addressed in the county admin manual.
Yeah. Is different what?
It is true that the admin manual talks about what is post-audit. So, that would be after the fact versus what, where the audits go in terms of review at the county executive's office level before it comes to the board supervisors.
I think, I think the better part of discretion is for us to have the audits come directly to us at the same time that they go to the CEO's office. It is, that's, that's the normal way of ensuring that everybody, that there's, that there's a genuine sense of independence. I can't imagine anything dramatic is going to happen once an audit has already been completed, you know, if the CEO received it. I don't mind taking time for the CEO to review it as we're reviewing it, but I think the appropriate way that an audit like this normally be handled is it shouldn't, if her direct report is to us, then it needs to come to us.
Yeah. I guess, I guess I agree with that. I'm just trying to vetting of understanding what's coming and from your standpoint of what's coming and so we have an understanding. Because, you know, all the different departments, we don't have the greatest, you know, we're not going to have all the understanding that you're going to have and that you're going to have, that's all.
And of course, this also identifies that the county executive's officer, office can initiate its own audits.
Yes. Yeah, of course, right. I just want to make sure also that we...
Non-financial.
Yeah, right. You two are working together to say, you may say, I think we need to audit this situation and she goes, yeah, that's great, we do, do, do. Or maybe, this may be a higher priority because of these issues.
Right.
Because we don't have all the resources in the world to audit everybody.
No, and that takes place when we do the audit plan for each year.
Right. And I think that's one of my biggest, biggest things. Okay. But I think that sounds, the wording is fine, I think.
And if I could, the other thing is for us to just make sure that we have clearly demonstrated, we have, the five of us have a responsibility to always, always have the right to ask for audits and do audits anytime we want, even, you know, of any department, the CEO's office or the auditor. So, that, I think that's the most essential thing is that the people elected by the public make sure that they retain that ability to do those audits.
Okay, then. Any other questions on this?
Well, in follow-up to Mr. Bennett's most recent comment, that rests with the board as far as the contract that we engage for the all-funds audit of the county, the financial statements that we bring to your board every year.
That we're saying do that.
Absolutely. The scope of the audit is included and I bring the external auditors in to address your board directly as, in compliance with the best practices today.
Right. Okay. You have another comment? Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Then we agree we'll take this as it is? You have a motion for that?
Second.
And we will vote. All right. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to 38.
Item 38 is the approval of the tax rates for fiscal year 08-09. They're exhibited on Exhibit 1 to the board letter and these are for voter-approved that we add to the property tax bills that go to our residents in specific special districts or local boards that have properly approved them through resolution.
Okay.
Move the approval?
We have a motion.
Second.
In a second.
Thank you.
And then we have 39.
Good morning Chairman Foye, members of the board. Marty Robinson, Christine. Today before you, we have a first reading and consideration to a First Amendment to the VCPPOA contract. This amendment will allow for vacation time to count as time worked for the overtime purposes, overtime calculations for a one-year period. Is there any questions?
Okay. We have speakers on this?
Yeah.
One speaker, Diane Hubbard.
My name is Diane Hubbard. I'm the President of the Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association. We represent the probation officers and the correction services officers. The correction services officers are the ones that would be the most affected by this. We've had a mandatory overtime policy at the juvenile facility for, off and on for a number of years. And the problem comes up is that if somebody has a vacation day scheduled and then they are mandated to work overtime in that same pay period, they don't earn overtime for that mandatory overtime period. It could be that they've worked 16 hours straight. Sometimes they work their regular eight-hour shift, there's nobody to cover them, the next person coming on shift has called in sick, they're then mandated to stay and work 16 hours. But if they've taken a vacation day earlier in the pay period or if they have a vacation day scheduled for later in the pay period, they don't get paid for that overtime for that 16-hour shift, which it's been very difficult. This is a very difficult job that these CSOs are doing. They do a wonderful job. They're dealing with very difficult situations and they're just exhausted. And about the only thing we can do is give them a little financial compensation to show our appreciation. So, I really, I admire and I applaud our administrator, particularly Chief Staples, recognizing what the problem is, working with John and Nicole to come up with some, at least a temporary solution to the problem. And so, I really hope that you will approve this and show the CSOs that we do appreciate the tough job that they have.
Right. Thank you very much. Any comments?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, we have a, we, I mean, a major reason why this is happening is we're still having a recruitment problem, which is, which is causing the need for overtime. So, I sure hope, and it seems like about every year for the last three years, we've said, we got to really, we really got to crack this nut in terms of recruitment and hiring, et cetera. So, that's, that's one hope is that we can get after that and this sort of stimulates us to renew those efforts, not that we haven't been working hard at it. The second thing is, I think it's a compliment to everybody involved that the union representative is here as well as management to speak in favor of this. And the idea of trying this for a year and when you're dealing with this whole issue of overtime and stuff, there's the law of unintended consequences seems to keep jumping up and stuff. And so, I think it's a great first step for us in terms of moving forward, but I sure hope that we can get much closer to full staffing and really address the real fundamental problem here rather than, rather than the solution. So, with that, I'll move the recommended action.
We have a motion in a second.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our district attorney.
Morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Adam, CEO. Mike jumped with the district attorney's office. Item is pertaining to the ratification for submittal of an application and the authorization to accept the funds for the successful application to the Craig Thompson Environmental Protection Prosecution Fund in the amount of $50,000.
Great. Want a motion?
Move the recommended action. Second.
And congratulations on getting the funds.
Thank you.
An all-in-one board letter, right?
That's it. I like that.
Less paper. Okay, we'll go to 41.
Chairman Foye, members of the board. Ms. Robinson, my name is Butch Britt, Public Works Agency. This has been a long process, but this is only the authority to publish the notice of intent. The notice of intent would be the notice of intent to convey the roadies went on Victoria Avenue from the bridge basically south to the Oxnard, where Oxnard picked up their jurisdiction now. A portion of Tito Club Road, a very small portion, which is the only portion that was left over from the previous annexations by the city, and a small portion of Gonzalez, which is necessary for the signal sensors to be placed in. But today's action only gives us the authority to publish the notice. But today's action only gives us the authority to publish the notice. We will be back on the twenty-third with a public hearing and the other actions that your board will have to take at that time, should you approve this item.
Okay. You got a motion?
I second it and I'd just like to make, this is good government in action. This, we have all of these, we have all of these kind of situations out there. Oxnard is making the decisions that are impacting this road in terms of the land use and all of that. It's very appropriate for them to then also be making the decisions about where they want to put, you know, traffic changes and that stuff. So my compliments to Mr. Britt for playing a major role in pushing this forward.
Okay, so you want to handle the next one, sir?
I'll certainly try. Other than trying to move redistrict without authority, I apologize supervisor along for that. It was District Three, and as Ms. Robinson already pointed out. Dealing with the railroad's been a long drawn-out process, often frustrating. We finally have an agreement with them to offer your board. It's not a perfect agreement, as we point out in the board letter, but the alternative when dealing with a railroad is no agreement, you know? They don't really care. And so it is necessary to have this agreement to proceed with the Lewis Road approvals. This is the last requirement in a long list of requirements that we had to have prior to obtaining the Caltrans authorization to go to bid, and we would ask that your board approve this agreement with the union in Pacific.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I'm sure you can't keep up with your bourbon.
Yes, yes. Can we call the machine out for her?
Thank you.
So we're even?
Yeah, we're even, that's right. One to one, there you go. All right. We'll go to forty-three on our sheriffs.
Good morning Chairman Foy, members of the board. I'm Susan Duñez with the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. This morning, we're requesting your approval on a resolution in connection with our fiscal year 2008 Homeland Security Grant, designating authorized agents for the grant, which would be the sheriff, under sheriff, assistant director of disaster services, so that they can sign documents on behalf of the county under this grant.
Okay.
Any questions?
We got a motion. We have a second. And there it is. Who are you waiting on?
Nobody.
Oh, nobody. This machine's going to come and bite you next time, that's a new update. Forty-four.
All right. Next item that we are requesting approval on is the authorization for increase in appropriations for our fiscal year 2007 grant, which is continuing from last year. We need to reappropriate the remaining funds that are left on that grant. The, this grant should be completed this year, although we do have until December 2009 to complete our projects, but I anticipate we should be done this year.
That's right. I learned the machine. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
And then, here we go, sir.
Good morning Chairman Foy, members of the board. I'm here today seeking approval for appropriations and unanticipated revenue for a grant award from the Office of Homeland Security, Office of Emergency Services for the 2007 Cover Deal Grant. We're recommending that your board authorize the auditor controller to process the necessary accounting transactions to adjust appropriations and unanticipated revenue into the Sheriff's Police Services Forensic Science Division.
Don't you just love it when you get unanticipated revenue, huh?
That's great. We love it.
We have a motion? I'll make it.
Thank you.
All right. We have our correspondence agenda.
Mr. Chair?
There's a lot of good things here you should probably make comments on.
I'd like to speak to item fifty-three, just to speak to it.
Fifty-three?
Yeah, item fifty-three. It's on the fuel reduction practices, range and watershed improvements by the Range Line Improvement Committee. I attended the meeting where this, these issues were discussed and Chief Roper was there, and I know he's working closely with the committee. And just to say, to encourage that he do so and that particularly, I think it's probably mostly my district and Supervisor Bennett, and some of yours, Supervisor Foy, where there are issues for those folks who own these vast range land areas and obviously the fire protection and challenges of having, having fire break areas and the resources necessary to do that. So just to say that I appreciate that Chief Roper was there and this committee will be very active in going after resources, I think, both at the federal level and locally for us to support what they feel is a proactive solution for fire protection.
Good, very good, thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. There are three items in the correspondence agenda I wanted to call out, and one is the Supper Ojai, you know, and there's the issue of the improved fire situation by having these burns, but there's also the issue of the smoke in the communities and we have to find the appropriate trade-off there in terms of the right time and all of that to move forward. The second thing I'd like to call out is item forty-six, and that's the letter from the flood, the National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator. And I'd just like to read this into the record, because I think it's outstanding. And that is FEMA says that they receive the county's flood plain management ordinance that we recently adopted, and this is a credit to our flood plain, I mean, our watershed protection district work. But this is what I'd like to read into the record. This comes from the head of the National Flood Insurance Program, Henry Chow. He says, "Based on my review of the latest draft flood plain management ordinance, your ordinance meets and exceeds the current National Flood Insurance Program regulations. This draft ordinance is one of the most comprehensive and forward-looking ordinances I have received. In addition, the provisions of this ordinance that go beyond the basic National Flood Insurance Program requirements may be useful in the future if the county chooses to apply for the community rating system, which is a National Flood Insurance Program that provides discounts to flood insurance policyholders. I believe the ordinance, if adopted, will serve the unincorporated Ventura County community well." I'd just like to point out, it's one of those good government things that happen, but everybody that may down the road end up with lower flood insurance and discounts on their flood insurance because of this good proactive work, you know, won't know it, but they should appreciate that. The other thing that I wanted to call out is item fifty-one, and just call your attention to the Wildlife Conservation Board, which I think has significant influence in the state in terms of allocations of state bond monies, is calling out for improved fish passage for steelhead and salmon on four coastal streams. And one of them, you know, one county called out is Ventura County. And so that can again help us as we're trying to access funds for both Santa Clara and the Ventura River, and we certainly are constantly trying to lobby for those funds. So anyway, three letters I wanted to call out in the correspondence agenda, thank you.
I just commented, one up from FEMA was specific to the Public Works Agency, not watershed protection district, which is our flood plain manager at this point in time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's impressive for somebody to write back and say those kind of things. So congratulations to those people who are doing all that hard work. All right, I think that gets us through our regular agenda. Oh, yeah, let's do that. That's a good idea. And if Roberto let us, I guess we'll take a break, huh? We'll take a break until ten o'clock in our time, sir. Okay, you can hear me? No? No? Sounds like it. All right, I think I'm not speaking loud enough. Speak up, all right. Okay, we're going to go to our ten o'clock time cert. Sorry, we're a little late. And our first one, I get the opportunity to do, and this is with our Hunger Action Month. As we know, that millions of Americans suffer from food insecurity and hunger, and risk of hunger. As the number of those people in this county grows, Food Share in Ventura County and its able staff have been caring for these people for over thirty years. And so it's exciting that we have that opportunity to share, you know, this time, thirty years, that's a long time to be doing that. And you know, in this county, it's, we think of a prosperous county, but there's still an awful lot of people out there who suffer. And it's great to see that we have a group out there who really cares and you've got the faith community, the farm community, all working together to serve these people and the basic need of eating. I mean, how much more can it get down to? And I think the idea of fear of hunger going hungry, their children going hungry, that's a difficult situation. So, you know, I'd like to thank Food Share for their thirty-year service and I'd like to congratulate you. And, you know, this is action, Hunger Action Month, and I think it's a, it's just a great fitting thing that around the, around the country, we take this opportunity to say there is people out there that care about other people and they're willing to do whatever it takes to feed them. And I want to say thank you to you. And I think Jewel Petty, is she here? Are you going to come up and get this? The whole group, are you going to come up? Come on up and say a few comments while I come down.
Thank you Chairman Foy and members of the board. I'm Craig Skeels, I'm chairman of the board at Food Share. This is Fran McNeil, she's our interim CEO. And Jewel Petty, who is one of our founders of Food Share, started with a vision from her garage over thirty years ago, and we've grown to where we now serve about forty thousand people each and every month. So what we're seeing in this economy is that we not only have more people that need our services, but it's also more challenging than ever just to keep the funding coming in. So we're doing lots of things to help with the funding and grow and serve those in need. And our goal is to eliminate hunger in Ventura County. And we'd really like to thank you very much for recognizing what we've done. We want to grow that much more over the next thirty years, but hopefully ultimately maybe eliminate the need for our services too. And Jewel, do you have anything you want to share?
I would just always like to say thank you to this board. You've supported us all the way through those thirty years. I'm just really appreciative because you've been there for us and you've helped us do this. So I just really want you to know how much we all appreciate everything you've done for us.
Fran, any words?
Just a quick thank you for your support, for your continued attention to the need in this county. It's growing and this recognition is so significant with a thirty-year anniversary. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add my voice to, it's, the thanks really goes to you guys for patching this thing together for the citizens of Ventura County. It's been, you know, we've, you've been there long-term and it's, you're doing God's work with this, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no question that we can come up here and say thank you to you, because you're the one, your hands out there working, gathering all the people because you care. And there's other things people could do, but you care enough for, the less fortunate, we just say thank you for that. Thank you so much. So come together, let's hear, I want to give you this, there's a couple of them here, we can take a picture. Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you for your good work. And I know that you need more volunteers, so that's another good opportunity to raise awareness and get more volunteers.
Always.
Always.
It's always nice to do those kind of things. Okay, number twenty-five, we have a public hearing?
Good morning Chair Foy, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Steve Williams with the Public Works Agency. And this item is adoption of a resolution granting a water franchise renewal to the Piru Mutual Water Company, which has been in business in the county since nineteen fifty-two. The item is routine in nature in that it isn't a renewal of an existing water franchise agreement. Five weeks ago, on August fifth, you approved the notice of intention to, the notice and resolution of intention to renew the franchise and set the hearing for today. So we're recommending that you do go ahead and approve this renewal of this franchise. Notice was published at today's hearing as required, it was published by the clerk of the board. So I will limit my comments to any questions you may have.
Since we have a public hearing, we have no speakers? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Do you have any comments? We have a motion? There you go, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then we'll move to item twenty-six.
Chairman Foy, supervisors, Ms. Robinson, for the record, my name is Christina Ritzari and I'm from the RMA Planning Division. I'm here to discuss item twenty-six, which was heard on July first, two thousand and eight by the board, and the decision was made unanimously to approve the project. Due to a procedural oversight involving the posting of the pre-adoption board summary of the ordinance text amendment, the watershed protection district and the RMA Planning Division request that the board rescind the July first decision and ask that the board adopt the text amendment once more as depicted in Exhibit Three of the packet that you had before you. So if you have any questions, I will answer them. Thanks.
Do we have any questions? No? Okay, so we'll null the first one and adopt the second one.
Yes.
And no public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. So we have a motion? And a second? Okay, great. All right, we'll move to number, item twenty-seven. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. The, we had valley-wide discussions in the Ojai Valley trying to identify some issues that the valley could coordinate and come behind that were positive issues. One of those two issues was disaster preparation. And as I begin my comments, I'd like to call Sean and Beth, if you'd come on up here, please. Sean and Beth represent two of one hundred and eighty people since we had those valley-wide discussions that have come forward to go through the search training program. That's the citizens' emergency response teams. And it has been a fantastic movement in the Ojai Valley. And these two- And these two are real leaders of the CERTS program in the Ojai Valley. And what we have with 180 people, we've been able to divide the whole valley up into various neighborhoods. So there's a CERTS, there are CERTS teams in each of the neighborhoods and then they've divided their neighborhood up. So we may be the five people from a particular neighborhood, Miners Oaks, Miramani, and then you may have these seven streets and you may have six streets and all that. So they've divided everything up and I'm gonna ask them to speak in just a minute, but I wanted to, get this on your radar screen, this is a first of its kind disaster drill like this in Ventura County. It's gonna take place in Ojai on September 17th. And what will happen is, we have just had, the community has come together so well with this, and that's what's really great about this. It's not something that is draining a tremendous amount of county staff resources, it's the community, it's 180 volunteers and everybody stepping forward with this. But the local newspaper, this Friday, will have this insert in the newspaper and it's an okay sign. And this will be something that every family will receive. And at 7 o'clock on September 17th, everybody's asked to do three things. One, review their disaster plan with their family, great for children to review that. And on the back of your okay sign, so this is what's facing outside saying, telling everybody you're okay, but inside you have disaster plans, so it's gonna be a reminder for you to do that. Review your disaster plan, post this, and then tune to the new local station, 1610, that is a station very similar for the benefit of the public, you know, when you drive to the airport and you get that local radio station. This is local to the Ojai Valley Sheriff's Department, working with the City of Ojai, has done a great job of bringing that forward. So we're asking people to do those three things on that night on September 17th. So I think it's just really great, we've had, the Red Cross has stepped forward, they've held disaster preparation classes, the county and help of Ojai have joined forces to pass out literature to elderly people. And the CERTS teams are going around trying to identify where those elderly people are in the neighborhoods so that they know which people need particular attention if a disaster hits. I would offer, you are never going to be as prepared for disaster as you'd like to be, but I guarantee you, the Ojai Valley is gonna be so much better prepared after September 17th than it was a year or two ago, after these teams fan out and count how many families have put the okay signs up. And so I also, just before I ask you two to make comments, want to make sure that we offer some special appreciation to the City of Ojai, Ventura County Fire Department, and we have Bill Nash and Chief Ted Smith here, I'm gonna call up in just a minute after our two CERTS speakers, the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, the City of Ojai Police, the Ojai Valley CERTS team members, the other 180 of them that are out there, Ventura County Auxiliary Services, Area 5, and the Ojai Unified School District. We, the ham radio operators are involved in this. I mean, this is really an exciting event and a very valuable event for the Ojai Valley and it's simply the result of people coming together and deciding to do that. And I hope I didn't steal all of your thunder, but want to turn it over and let these two people that represent, I just think, the finest in the Ojai Valley. They're doing this because they care about their neighborhood, they went through extensive training with Steve Lasby from the Santa Paula Fire Department, he did a great job. There were, how many weeks? Seven?
Seven.
Seven weeks, where they went to the training every week and stuff. So, thank you very much for being here today and give us your comments.
I went through the Red Cross training back in January, about how to run a shelter, how to manage a shelter training. And then the CERTS training was offered immediately after that. I completed the CERTS training back in March. And at our graduation, Supervisor Bennett was there with his staff, they asked if the room would divide into the nine designated CERT neighborhoods for the valley, which we did. Each of those groups was asked to choose one person to convene one meeting in the neighborhood to see how much farther we wanted to go as a neighborhood. And it was left up to us how we wanted to organize, how much we wanted to organize. I'm from Miners Oaks, I agreed to coordinate for Miners Oaks. I sit on the Miners Oaks Water District Board too, so it was easy for me to get the key to that office. So we had a meeting place. We had our one meeting and at that meeting, the, all the CERT graduates from Miners Oaks decided they wanted to meet regularly. So we've been having monthly meetings since then, monthly plus committee meetings and other, whatever's necessary to get the job done. We're preparing for the okay day, the Ohio Okay Day on the 17th, that'll be our first real exercise. We've been organizing using the Incident Command System, which I know is standard throughout emergency response systems, so that we'll be prepared to coordinate with all the other agencies involved in whatever may happen. We had very good support from Supervisor Bennett's office in terms of getting us the maps for the different neighborhoods and providing database management so we knew who we had and which neighborhood and how to get them plugged in. Also in serving as a liaison between CERT and whatever other agency we needed to communicate with, the fire people especially. We're very, very grateful for the support we've been given, it's made possible so much more. During the day fire, I personally was going door-to-door knocking on my neighbor's doors, trying to explain in Spanish what was happening because they really, they knew something was up, but they weren't clear what. And I feel so much better now knowing that I won't be alone in that effort. I've been especially grateful that what's been offered has been made available also in Spanish, in both languages, so that we'll be able to communicate to whoever needs to know. So, thank you.
I'm Sean Kelly Thorne and to the Board and to Steve, we're very appreciative of the support we've gotten from Steve's office. And we've also got a lot of support from the Sheriff's Department and from the Fire Department, which we really appreciate. I, we're, you know, in the chain of command, we're part of the Fire Department, but the OES is Sheriff's Department, so there's an overlap. And we have had good communication and support with both those agencies. The objective of this is to find out the status of the Ojai Valley as rapidly as possible so that the decision-makers can have real useful measurable information so that they can make decisions as to where to deploy and what to deploy. And then as CERT members that we can take certain responsibilities on for the care of our neighbors. And we appreciate all the work that's got into this. We didn't quite know how well it was going to work. This idea came from Culver City and one of our compatriots who's not able to be here, Paul Garth was, brought the idea in and it had been very successful down there as a means of communication and evaluation. So we felt that it was a worthwhile effort for here, presented it to Steve's office and then it started to take a life out of it's own on. So I appreciate it and thank you very much and thank you to the agencies that have been supporting us as well as they have. It was much more than we expected. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here. And just to continue this presentation so that everybody understands that, I mean, when the big earthquake hits, there will not be enough emergency personnel to respond. And the CERTS people will likely be the only people in a particular neighborhood that will be able to do anything. And for them to have touched our OES system, to touch our Fire Department, to have thought about this in advance, it's gonna be really valuable for the neighbors. And they will be tremendously helped if everybody gets on board and we hope that the press will help us with this in terms of publicizing this information so that everybody in the Ojai Valley knows about this day on the 17th. Because if they can go down a street and they can see signs in all of these and maybe only two or three houses don't have these up, they only have two or three houses that they have to check instead of maybe 20 or 25, they can get to those people that are really in trouble, they can get to those people quicker in that situation. Imagine if this sign goes up in the house of an elderly person that lives alone right after the earthquake. That'd be a great comfort, otherwise they would for sure be spending the time going in there and trying to catch that person. And so that is the ultimate goal of this. And the transition I'd like to make here is that very little in terms of, again, county resources be made available. I'd like to ask Chief Smith and Bill Nash if you'd want to come up and make any comments and thank you two for participating in the CERTS drill. Go ahead.
I'd like to mention, I've been preparing the Ojai Valley CERT Field Manual, Reference Manual, making it available to each of the nine coordinators and to each of the firehouses and the library and the Office of Emergency Services in Ojai, Supervisor Bennett's office. And I'd like to offer one to the County Executive Officer, if you'd like one, I can bring it up after the meeting. So, just so that we're literally all on the same page and know where we're at and what we're up to.
And while we're making this transition, I'd like to offer, if any Supervisors are interested in information about how our staff work with, work with the community in this, we'd be more than happy to do that, but.
Just one quick comment, we've got observers and participants coming from other CERT groups in the county, they have great interest. Operation Sunrise gave us the opportunity to make some connections with other CERT groups. So that was also a very good thing that's been supported by the county.
Great.
And we're looking forward to Operation Golden Guardian in November, so.
Great. And the debriefing at 8:30 after this exercise at 7:00 will be very interesting. Chief Smith and Bill?
Chairman Foye, Ms. Robinson, Board members, I don't know what else to say, I can only echo that the intent, the objective of the whole program is less 911 calls. On behalf of the Fire Chief, I'm here to represent the county fire. This is really starting to take off like we have expectations for it to do. It's been established all throughout the county for many years on a shoestring and a hope that we can get this message out and that, you know, other cities have developed great programs that have worked. Ojai's starting to develop and the unincorporated areas what our dream has been for this. Again, the intent is for the neighbor to help the neighbor, to organize in community groups and to generate less 911 calls so the professionals can handle the more arduous, bigger incidents that will require the professional aspect of the emergency. I wanted to thank my participants here, there's the golden opportunity for the success of the program. Supervisor Bennett, thank you for your indebted interest to this, it's been wonderful to have the support. I've been chewing on Chief Oper for a lot of years in regards to this and I think this is finally starting to resonate throughout the county, that the program is here to stay and is alive and well. And I think we're meeting our intent. So thank you all, appreciate the support from the county fire, we are blessed to have such great Supervisors, thank you.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you guys.
But thank you for being here, Bill. The final thing I'd like to do is just acknowledge the great hard work of two of my staff members. I normally do this, but this has been really exceptional. And that's Cindy Kendall and Brian Brennan that are sitting right behind those people have done a great job of helping to work with the details and stuff, so I want to thank them. So, thank you very much Board members and we'll see you guys on September 17th.
If I can, I just want to congratulate Supervisor Bennett and the Ojai community for putting this together. I think about some of the areas in my district where we have some good CERT teams, but this whole idea just takes it up a whole nother level and we really understand during emergencies how we have to rely on citizens helping citizens. Think about Santa Rosa Valley and Bell Canyon, Ventu Park, all these areas that are very high fire hazard areas that would be so well served to make sure that we can have something like this in place. And we'll be looking at your model and I would love to get also one of your CERT coordinated manuals too at my office and see what we can do in District 2, so congratulations.
Yeah, it was very good. I mean, being part of the Disaster Council, we realize that in a major earthquake, as you said, there's only gonna be about 1,500 total people to handle almost 800,000 people in this county. So people like yourselves, everybody has to be prepared. The best thing we got going is that you're hopefully making everybody aware to be somewhat prepared and somebody else will be looking in on it. So that's great, congratulations and look forward to your great event. Hopefully there's a lot of okays in everybody's windows. Yes, thank you.
And thank you Supervisor Bennett, also for the leadership in setting this model forward. I too have areas in my community, Piru being one, I think that's going to be key for us to be able to take this and replicate it in an isolated area that will appreciate your experience and be able to use it. Thank you.
I might point out, you know, one of the benefits we receive at the county level is this is an opportunity for us to introduce to everybody in the community this new radio system, 1610, you know, operated by the sheriff. So the sheriff certainly benefits in having more people be aware of that. In addition, we may be able to also test our reverse 911 system to some extent. And as you mentioned, Piru and some of these other isolated areas, that's one of the positive benefits of this activity also. So, again, thank you very much, we'll see you at 7 o'clock on the 17th.
Good. Alright, let's move on to our 10:30 time cert, catching back up. We have our Mr. Matheny, number 28.
Well, good morning all, welcome back. For the record, Lawrence Matheny, Treasury Tax Collector. You have before you our report of the investment activity in the Treasury Pool through the end of July. We're pleased to report that through that time period, by adhering to our conservative policy, we were able to obtain a yield of 3.38 percent, which translates into just under $5 million of investment earnings to benefit the pool participants. We'll be coming back to you later this month with a report of the activity in August, but for now, we're covering July and stand by to answer any questions. Mr. Hanson is here as well, so ask away.
You gotta start that reverse to go the other way. Got any ideas out there? No, I mean, it's, I guess we want to be conservative, no question, a lot of people losing a lot of money during this market. But I think you used to come out here and say we made $8 million, now we're making $5 million.
We're not gonna take the risk that would be involved in being able to report $8 million.
Yes, I don't blame you.
Not until the balance gets significantly greater than it is right now.
And I think that when you come back in the next month or two, we're still gonna see a trend, right? A continued trend downward?
Well, I would let Mr. Hanson stick his neck out on projecting out the way the trend is gonna go.
For the record, Bob Hanson, CIO. The portfolio's shrinking, from a high of about $2 billion down to about $1.5 billion due to the fact that we haven't had collections since April. So this is kind of a lean period, the portfolio goes down in value until we get the bills out and the money starts coming in. Actually, the interest rate for August will probably be about the same.
Will it? Okay, good.
So, we're pretty well positioned in the two to three year area. And while I'm here, you know, we've read a lot and heard a lot about Home Loan Mortgage Corp. and Fannie Mae. From time to time, we did own those. The debt that we owned with those agencies was never a concern to me, not one bit. We had the senior debt, it was an implied guarantee by the government, the government has to have these two agencies. And even though they've had huge stock problems in common and preferred, and they've now been taken over in a conservatorship by another agency, it just shows that this form of financial system had to have these two agencies and would do anything to keep them as they need Federal Home Loan Bank and they need the federal intermediate credit bank. So, I haven't bought a Fannie Mae since November 7th of 2005. It wasn't because I was worried about not getting our money, it's because I was unhappy with the audit they had and their accounting methods. And a couple of us, LA County, Orange County, we kind of stopped buying Fannie Mae just to send a message till they get their act together. In the Home Loan Mortgage Corp., we do own some of that debt and it's all rated AAA and now that the government has changed it from an implied to an explicit guarantee, it's even better. It's just the same as a government security. And someone like LA County owns 2.46 billion of the Mortgage Corp. So, the part that's in the paper, and justifiably so, is more the preferred stock and common stock. That's where stock that was worth 80 bucks a year ago is now worth 88 cents. But caveat emptor, and that's what happens in stocks, but I can't... But I can't remember in my 14 years ever holding an investment that I had one ounce of doubt in. Otherwise, it'd be gone the next morning when I got to the phone.
Great. Okay.
Can I just ask you real quick? You haven't purchased Fannie Mae since 2005?
November 7th, 2005, and the last maturity ran off September 1307.
And Freddie Mac? Have you?
I own 265 million. If anything, that, well, for sure, that, which is rated AAA by all the agencies, has gone up in value now that this new agency has taken them over, Home Loan Mortgage Corp. and Fannie Mae in a conservatorship. So now they are in essence guaranteed by the government. So if anything, the good news, that's good news, but the bad news is now the yield's going to drop because there's less risk.
And the bad news is that the government had to step in and take them over.
Yes.
That we have a systemic problem, which can overwhelm any system in there and stuff. But okay, I appreciate that.
I know I'm going to be getting money, and I always hate it when yields drop.
Well, good. Thank you. All right, any questions?
Along those same lines, I was just wondering, as we see some of the unrealized gains, losses going under, at least for this period of time, specifically with the Federal Farm Credit Union Credit Card Credit Bank, as well as we do the one Freddie Mac that you have in there, I'm wondering what we're going to see next month and into the future with that.
Well, you're going to see a potpourri of some have a gain and some have a loss because they're bought over a three-year period. And depending on the interest rate, it adjusts itself. So if interest rates, if you have a 4% issue and interest rates are 3%, it will be at a premium. If interest rates are 2%, it'll be at a discount. So we'll have a mix. But the good thing to know is that the market value is really more important in a trading portfolio where you're buying and selling, as a lot of the counties do. We are a buy and hold, so we're going to get our money at maturity. So I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but it's not a big criteria since we really never, we have really never in my time liquidated agencies prior to maturity.
Okay.
So it's really more in what would be called a trading portfolio. I don't like that style because then you're trying to guess the market. I just want to buy and hold and know what I'm going to get at maturity.
Thank you.
I know we're a buy and hold, but had the Freddie Mac securities gone up or down in value?
Up in value.
Up in value, in the last week?
Since Monday morning.
That's Monday, great.
Because the government stepped in and said, this is now a direct obligation. There's a new agency that is taking these two into conservatorship, fancy new name, which I could look up.
So we're seeing the prices on those actually be higher.
The value will go up, yes, because it's getting closer to, you know, it is a government security now, so everything is risk. Once it was sort of an implied guarantee, you had to have a little bit of spread because there was a difference. Now, they've said spreads have narrowed, so that means they're closer to governments, which means a lower yield but worth more money.
At a higher price.
And so in relation to Supervisor Park's question, in the Mortgage Corp. area, that will definitely, the value will go up, you know, appreciably.
Good. Okay.
I do appreciate the reports. I know some of these are the graphs are in black and white. This month, they like, it's a little bit easier to follow. And hopefully, once we can open them on our screen, we can see them in color, too.
You've got copies in black and white?
I can't. I personally can't open it on my screen. Yeah, well, you know, in our packets, all black and white.
You can do it.
So we don't, sometimes it's helpful to see it in color so we have a better idea.
I'm not up to date on, I know you guys have switched, but I know we used to give Roberta copies of colored graphs. We didn't?
No, they, the last several months, they've been in black and white.
There you go. Just go to, click and then go View Documents. Can you see yours? You've got yours to work to, okay.
Point and click. Well, they're very pretty.
Yeah, they look great. Huh? We need a motion? You going to ruin all our fun now? Okay. There you go. It's already done, so we got to vote. Well, thank you. Appreciate the good information. Thanks. What? You can't miss it, can you? I think they did it just for us. Yeah. Next time, I'll go ding, it comes up. Okay. We will move to item number 29. Oh, you have speakers? You do. Do you want to introduce it first for your speakers? Okay.
Well, thank you. AB 811 is an assembly bill that passed through the legislature that allows cities and counties to set up benefit districts where people can voluntarily put onto their property tax roll the cost of installation of solar units and a few other specific things that qualify from an energy savings standpoint. I am happy to, Supervisor Park, and I'd be able to bring this forward to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors in the hopes of trying to stimulate this to take place both in the unincorporated area of the county, with the county's efforts, and take place in all of the cities in Ventura County. We certainly, with everything that we see with energy, with climate change issues out there, et cetera, the more we can get on to renewable sources, the better off we all are. AB 811 specifically calls out the installation of these things as a public benefit, that the public overall benefits if more people install solar units. And that's one of the reasons in my conversations with county council why they feel confident that this will qualify for the public benefit requirement that needs to be a part of this bill. Two cities in the state of California have begun this process. Palm Desert is the farthest along. They actually implemented the whole program last week with the specific details. In other words, the step after the step that we're taking today. The step today that we're taking is to conceptually support the formation and direct the CEO's office to begin taking those steps that are necessary for us to come back with all of the implementing actions. AB 811 has a number of required steps that you have to take if you want to implement this benefit district according to AB 811. Those implementing steps are the things that will require some organization on the part of the CEO's office to put together. And the auditor will certainly have to be actively involved in that process also. So the recommended actions are to conceptually support the formation of this, to direct the CEO to consult with county council to make sure we're following all the provisions of AB 811, and consult with the auditor on implementation of AB 811, funding program for alternative energy and energy conservation in the unincorporated area. That's recommendation two. Three, in an attempt to try to get the other cities to also do this, we cannot adopt a benefit district for the city. We can only adopt, it's one of the big frustrations, I see Rachel out there, you know, we can't adopt green building codes for the cities. We can't, you know, there's so many things. This mixed jurisdiction always makes it, you know, at least more cumbersome to try to get something done countywide. But extended invitation of the cities to discuss with the county the possibility of the county providing some incentives to the cities to create their own AB 811 program. And I would offer that those incentives can come in two forms. And one, it could be an in-kind services, et cetera, that the county can provide because we've gone through the process of setting this up, perhaps something in terms of administration, et cetera. The other would be at least entertain the possibility of some kind of matching, particularly for cities that don't have the reserves that the county has in terms of reserves. Some kind of matching for the smaller cities that may want to do this program and just don't feel like they have as much. And that might be on a, you know, a two-to-one basis, a three-to-one basis, where a city puts up $3 and we had put up another dollar of our reserves. One of the issues is the whole issue of the financing, and it says research, potential funding, and grant sources to support this program, which is what, one of the things that Riverside is doing. But Riverside is also committing a certain percentage of their city reserves to be able to fund this. And this is a very secure use of these reserves on our part because these things will be on the property tax rolls. They will have to be paid back before the property could be sold to anybody else. The property tax bill would have to be paid. And one of the hopes is that besides the fact that it would be very secure for the county, from the county's standpoint, that some other lenders may be willing to step up and say, this extra security involved in the fact that this is going to be paid back through the property tax rolls may make some lenders be willing to step forward. The, so the fifth step is, as starting guidelines, and this is for the CEO to consider as they're going through this process, things may evolve and they may come back with some different recommendations. But I don't want, I didn't think that we wanted to leave them just with such a complete open field. They didn't have some sense, some guidelines for the board, and that is temporarily capping the county's loaning of funds at 3% of the county's reserves. If our reserves drop, we should lend less money. If our reserves grow, we should be able to pay more money. If we reach that cap, then no more loans take place until people pay their loans back. So that we limit the exposure, and I think the exposure is very minimal when you realize it's on the property tax rolls. Capping the loan payback period to 15 years, state legislation allows it to be 20, but you want these loans to be paid back so that other people can get in line, and you don't want people to stretch this out. And again, would like to have the CEO's consideration of that. And then charging rates and fees to make the program overall revenue neutral, that includes the overhead. I note that Riverside, I believe, has an administrative fee that, what's that?
You mean Palm Desert?
I mean Palm Desert, yes, right. Palm Desert has an administrative fee that they charge plus the loan. And quite frankly, if this does nothing else, I mean, people may look at our loan and say, hey, we can go and do better with a second mortgage. Fine, if it stimulated, you know, that thinking and it got people to do that. But charging those rates and fees, so we're not out there trying to make money off this program, but we want to make sure that the taxpayers will be fully reimbursed for the program. So those are the five steps. And turn it over to Supervisor Park for any comments you'd like to make.
Well, I think in light of our discussion during board comment referring to AB 32 and what we can do as a county to help deal with the effects of climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, this is right on target. And there are other things that we can do to encourage people to reduce their use of electricity and things that give off greenhouse gas. And solar panels is right along those lines. So this, to me, not only being able to extend it to the unincorporated county, but where the populations are in the city. So having this available, working with the cities through some contracts, we could probably put together incentives for citizens of the cities, too, where the population is. Really like the idea, how this encourages people who may not be thinking they can afford this, that, you know, if it's drawn out through their property taxes, it's something that they could do. I also like the concept that this is starting, or helping companies to get a green industry here in Ventura County. I know there's some companies, for example, that work with wind turbines, and they're trying to work to see that we can reduce our permit fees and encourage them. And so once you have that kind of open door, it brings companies in. And I think this is one of those examples, if we can help people to get solar panels up through the county, and that it is certainly serves the public good, then that would also help industry. And I think getting those kind of businesses in our county is what we'd like to do, too. I also would encourage that the board support moving on this.
Okay. We got some speakers?
Yeah, I'd like to. One, I certainly support going forward with this to conceptually support the formation of this funding program and parts of it. I would ask that it include in the implementing discussions that you ask the CEO to undertake, the assessor's office. One of the things through the Regional Energy Alliance, as we've stepped into trying to do some incentives into the business and residential community, that folks will call the Energy Alliance and ask about, you know, is there a property tax benefit? Is there, if we do this, will we expect the assessor to be knocking on our door? And so those kind of questions need to be part of the discussion. And also to include the Regional Energy Alliance, one, because in that alliance, we have, other than cities in the county, we have special districts of water and schools and community colleges. And this bill includes conservation measures in addition to the one that catches everyone's attention, of course, is the solar. But it also includes things like replacing air conditioning units and installing dual pane windows. So I think to have the Regional Energy Alliance in the discussion also would be very useful. There's, this is one, I think, of, I expect legislation to come, you know, in the next few years that's going to really try to incentivize the whole efforts for conservation and climate change benefits. So good to have, as I said, under the SB 375 dialogue, to make sure you have the leadership team at the table that have the nexus to these issues.
Well, I certainly welcome those suggestions. I think they're both good ones, so I'll add those to the recommended action when we make the motion to have appropriate discussions with the assessor, mostly about the assessor passing on the proper information. As we looked at, I don't believe the assessor has another specific, and then the Regional Energy Alliance also. I might point out that I know, saw a comment some time ago where Governor Schwarzenegger was, when he was in, talking about why he favored this bill, is that he was hopeful that this would provide an opportunity for people to find a way to finance these improvements in a more cost-effective manner. Property tax roll may be able to do that for some people.
And I just comment, as we do move forward on this, this is something also that I can bring to BCOG and, because that's, the city alliances can start to discuss their involvement in this.
Well, let me speak before we talk about speakers. You know, while I support aiding homeowners and business owners who can't afford maybe the cost of installing some of this panels to cut the electricity bills, I'm not, I don't believe this is the role of government, I'll be honest with you. I just, I don't believe this is the role of government. And I think it's way outside of the bounds of government to be doing, getting involved in this kind of thing and, you know, using your tax authority to do this kind of stuff. If this is such a good deal, I would think the banks would want to finance this stuff. You know, we're in a whole program, we're in a whole era right now where the growth of government is so out of control. And we're going to try to bring in a whole new program here now. When we don't even understand, you know, what the state's going to do to us or anything else, I don't believe that we should be doing this at all. And the idea of taking 3% or 5% or some number of our reserves and loaning those out, the other thing I see is at some point, we've got to foreclose. And so the county's foreclosing on Sam Smith's home over there because he didn't pay his bill. The other thing about putting this on the tax roll, we have to add that, we add it to the tax roll. If it's difficult for people already, if they can't make a monthly payment on their loan, how are they going to have it all lumped into two payments, you know, at the end of the year when they do their taxes? This gets very, very expensive. Again, I just don't see it as government's role of getting involved in this. I mean, there's no question, it's great that we can do this in the sense of, we want to encourage people to save on electricity, we want to encourage people to use solar, no question about it. But at the other side, I just don't believe government should be involved at all in doing this kind of a thing. And we don't need to run another program because, you know, it will require staff time. To go through this whole thing, it's going to take hours and hours of people to develop a program. It's going to require a lot of staff time, and we're trying to reduce that time right now. I just don't see this as something that we should be, we should be doing. So my comments, if anybody wants to make any comments on those before we hear the speakers?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. I always welcome it, and I always appreciate sort of the upfront and collegial philosophical disagreement. First of all, I just want to clarify in terms of the foreclosures. It's not like people are going to be able to pay their property tax bill but say, but I'm not going to pay on my solar bill. We've already checked with the treasurer. You either, you pay your property tax bill or you don't pay your property tax bill. If you don't pay your property tax bill on time, you get the penalty and then ultimately. So if there's going to be a foreclosure, it's, I don't believe there's going to be anything significantly different. to be anything significantly different than foreclosures where the county has to do that. And it's not very often that we are selling property to get the property tax paid. I mean, there's, there are some times when that happens. So I don't think this would have any significant change in that because you wouldn't, uh, people are either going to pay that property tax bill or they're not going to pay that property. On the, on the larger question of whether, you know, whether the government should do this or not, I think that is just a straight up philosophical question. And I think when it comes to, um, the crisis, as big as the crisis facing us, you know, I, I think if you, if you put this down in the last hundred years, you know, there have been a few times when crises have been so big that you literally need to take coordinated action and you need the government to help incentivize people to help solve that problem. This issue of climate change, energy independence, um, uh, sustainability is so big that I think it is appropriate, uh, for the government to try to incentivize this. We are not giving these people the money. We are simply creating a mechanism for them to finance where it's a loan that's being paid back. And a loan, I think, is very different. You know, if we were out there saying, hey, we're, we'll, we'll pay for half of the cost of the solar unit, that would be a subsidy, um, that, 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 you know, that, that I think would, could, would be inappropriate. But if we're sitting there saying it's a loan, they're simply making that decision. I don't think those people that are already getting stuck with big bills and having trouble making it, there's, those are not the people that are going to come forward and say, let's put a solar unit, uh, on their house. I think it's going to be people that, um, are, are, feel like they can handle these payments, it's just that the financing costs, et cetera, are too high. So appreciate that.
Okay, no, I, I think that's a good, a good comment. But I think that's why we have commercial banks though, right? We don't finance cars, we don't finance a lot of things. And I think that's why we have commercial banks. If people believe their electricity bills are too high, I mean, one of the things we're doing is we, we must be given a subsidy in some sense if they're going to come to us versus going to a bank. I mean, one of the things, I'm not even sure how you would even rate, I don't know from county council standpoint, are we even able to, how do we charge? Can we set a rate? Because we can't make money on our money, right?
We, I know that we can charge, just like any assessment district, for the cost of setting this up. So we can give back the administrative cost.
But the loan, the loaning of the money, how would you, how would you assess that number? Because sometimes we make so much money, we, we borrow money on our money. I mean, it just becomes a complicated issue. But I think it goes back to our, our philosophy that, that I just believe that, um, government should do only what, what people can't do for themselves and people can go to a bank and finance this. There's no question.
I, I'd like to speak to that if I can. And that is just that this, uh, whether you believe in climate change or not, I, I think this is probably the biggest problem of our generation, this issue. And unfortunately, I think it is a role of government because I think we all need to take ownership of it for it to be, to get an effect. And, uh, both governments and individuals. And to me, this is the, the perfect opportunity to show leadership in, in helping people to, for example, go solar. And it's something that isn't a subsidy from government, but it's an opportunity to use our government to assist.
Well, it has to be a subsidy if it's cheaper than the banks.
I, can I jump on that one?
How does that work?
And it's good that we have these, 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 a subsidy, you see, it has to be a subsidy because it's cheaper than the bank. If we are, let's say that this program gets set up, and I'm not certain that it will, but let's say this program got set up where they said, where we said whatever money we are earning, we just had Mr. Hanson here talking about tonight. We say whatever money we're earning on our reserves, that's the interest rate that this person, that, that this homeowner has to pay, right? We're not subsidizing anything. What we're doing is, we are doing with, I think, the most appropriate thing of government is that we're creating a win-win situation where we're saying the taxpayer, who going to a bank would have to pay, uh, the bank and the profit that the bank wants to build into the system, we're letting the taxpayer perhaps borrow the money at the rate the county could borrow the money at. We do that in a number of other situations where we collectively work together with, with other school districts, et cetera, and we pool resources. This would be sort of like pooling our, pooling our loans together. Would I do this so that somebody could go out and buy a, a private automobile? Absolutely not, right? Because it's not that public benefit. But a subsidy would be that we're letting them take advantage of collective action. And they can only take advantage of that collective action in this situation, you know, sort of through the government, uh, property tax program. So that's why I would say it's not a subsidy, even though it's less money, it is instead the benefits of collectively working through your government to take advantage of a lower government rate.
I, I guess, I, I think you, you, you've, uh, worked hard to build reserves and I'd hate to, if we have a hundred million dollars in reserves, we put $3 million out, that I'd hate to see us, that, that money go someplace else. Anyway, I think we just have a philosophical difference. I don't believe government should be doing this kind of a, a thing. So anyway, do we have a motion?
Well, we got speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have some speakers. Rachel Morris. Um, can we keep these down to three minutes? That work for you?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Rachel Morris and I'm here to represent VC Coal. We've got about 380 members. And I'm also here representing a new regional group that's forming and I hope, I'm going to put on a little plug, our next meeting is October 1st.
Can you put those two microphones together?
First thing you represent?
Um, VC Coal is the Local Global Warming Action Group. And then a second group is a regional organization that's just forming. It's countywide and we're coming together to discuss and strategize about global warming and energy issues specifically. And, um, so when I sent out the alert about the importance of this issue yesterday afternoon, I have been getting, uh, emails pouring in both from VC Coal as well as from a more regional countywide group of people that are very excited and interested in this policy. And the thing that's so important about this policy is that it's essentially, it's a bridging kind of policy. Because there's a lot of excitement and even people that aren't green putting out their big promo about pictures with windmills behind them and pictures with solar. But the question is, how do we get there from here? And one of the key pieces about this particular policy is that in addition to the fact that, hey, it's a loan, it also deals with the fact that we have very mobile society today. I don't know how long I'm going to be in my house. I could move in three years. And that is the kind of thing that really stalls people out, particularly in these times, about making a very practical investment that they would love to make. And that's one of the key things that I'm getting back from my emails is, oh my gosh, I want to hear about, how did this go? Wish I would have known about this. Because what we can do as citizens is we can say, we have the funding to pay this loan back, you know, with our property taxes, but if my job changes or, you know, something comes up and I need to move, even within the city or even out of the city, I pass on this loan to somebody else and I don't have to go under holding the bag. Then if I'm a buyer, I'm coming into it, I'm getting something that's, hey, this building is possibly off the grid with electricity and so forth. So that's why this is such a key issue and why the citizens are looking to government to support this, is this is something that the small one guy isn't going to make happen by herself. It's the kind of thing where if you have a big, a big program, I can key into it and it can work for me and it's very practical. The other thing I want to point out is that I, I really hope that in addition to, uh, go ahead and passing that for the unincorporated areas, that you do go ahead and adopt the policy to help the cities, um, uh, adopt this as well. So thank you for letting me speak.
Wayne Pendry?
Thank you for hearing me and, and appreciate all of your time on listening to about AV 811. I represent the Ventura County Contractors Association, which is the oldest and largest nonprofit in the county of Ventura with over 700 companies. I also represent the U.S. Green Building Council's local chapter, C4, and I represent the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We are all supportive of AV 811. We are all very look, much forward to looking to your leadership to help us with this. This is a project that I have been working on for some time personally, way back before AV 811 started. This initially came up in concept through the Berkeley Initiative. Berkeley tried to get this off the ground, they're a charter city, and their dynamics of a charter city didn't work for all cities. Coachella, Coachella Valley sponsored this initiative and smoothed out the kinks to make this work so that government could get involved and help homeowners achieve solar. This is a win-win and win situation. This is where the homeowner wins, this is where the county and the cities win, and this is most importantly where the environment wins. The way this works, solar takes about 13 to 15 years to break even on solar photovoltaic electricity. With a 20-year tax assessment, the cities and counties can actually make a profit on this through financing it. This is not a loss in revenue to the counties or the cities. This is a win for the counties and cities. This is a win for the homeowners who cannot afford to, to finance solar on their own ability because they can, if they can afford to pay their electric bill at the same dollar amount that they're paying now for 20 years, they can afford solar. Everybody wins and the environment wins. This can, as Kathy Long mentioned, this can be used for much more than solar electricity. There's many other types of energy efficiencies that need to be addressed that will reduce the demand of how much solar is actually needed. And while we're talking about solar, a lot of things are overlooked in solar hot water, which is more important than solar electricity. That information comes from the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, as they talk about how it reduces much more emissions in our air quality, um, it's much more beneficial and the return on investment's much quicker, it's a much smaller investment overall. If the county does lead the way, the cities will follow. They need that leadership. We need to smooth it out, we need that kind of leadership going on. The solar hot water being more important, we, we really need to address all the emissions coming out of these individual stacks off of each people's houses. The byproduct being improved air quality, of which I'm sure the members of the Air Pollution Control District can appreciate. Solar companies do feasibility analysis at no charge to see if this is even feasible for individual homeowners, because it's not appropriate for all homeowners. If they've got treaties, issues, shade issues and such like that, they're not going to qualify. So one of the things that needs to be addressed is whether it's even feasible for the individual homeownerships, which will be a case-by-case study. One of the other things that comes up and which will need to be done, I recommend, is getting together a list of pre-selected solar companies that are local to the Ventura County area, so the tax dollars stay in Ventura County and don't go to big outside operations.
That's your, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
So, uh, we have any more, we don't have any more speakers?
Just Linda had her name on there, but you want to go?
I did.
Okay.
I did already.
Oh, you did, okay. So you're already gone.
Um, then I, I would, I would like to move the recommended action, I'd like to point out to Rachel that one of the recommended actions is to extend an invitation to the cities to join this program with some kind of incentive. Move the recommended action with the modification of the two additions that Supervisor Long brought up, and I know we have APCV waiting, so I'll leave it at that.
Can I ask one question? There was a comment that was made that the loan, quote loan, would travel with the house if somebody left? Does that become an assessment more than a loan? Is that?
It is an assessment.
That's exactly what, it's a.
It's an assessment, okay.
Yes.
That's what we're actually, we're setting up a benefit district and it's essentially like an assessment district. It is a, and it, but the difference is it's a voluntary one. You only enter into it if you want it.
Yes, it's called a contractual assessment. The, uh, the property owner would contract with the government to be assessed.
It'd be done individually as opposed to whole neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks.
So I move the recommended action.
A second.
Do we have a motion? And how do we get back here? One second.
And it's, you know, I also think of, uh, the last assessment district we did also involved the government assisting with the loan in the beginning, so it's, uh, it's the same principle.
Is everybody done? Okay. So move forward. All right, we have to, we'll take a break if we move into our air quality assessment.
And that vote, the vote passed on a V1, is that right?
V1, yes. Who's going to present?
Very good. For the record, my name is Bruce Smith. I'm with Ventura County Planning Division, manager of the general plan section. The item that is before your board today is a general plan amendment and attendant zone text amendment and zone change dealing with the subject of scenic resource protection. As a way of providing background, approximately a year ago during the budget sessions, your board gave the planning division direction to proceed with amendments to the general plan to address some concerns, major concerns regarding the manner in which the county had been processing permits within the scenic resource protection areas, also concerns about that perhaps our codes didn't, that were not consistent with City of Thousand Oaks, at least in that particular area. And there were also concerns in the Ojai Valley that the ridge lines, although perhaps a valued resource, isn't the only area within that area plan, that was felt to be in need of resource protection, or scenic resource protection. As a result, we actually looked at the issue both from a countywide standpoint and as well as the specific areas that were raised, meaning the Thousand Oaks and Ojai areas, and we prepared a background report and a recommended program to accomplish a number of tasks. The item today is phase one of a two-phase process. This phase is dealing with updating the countywide general plan, land use appendix as it deals with scenic resources, also updating the goals policies and programs from a countywide standpoint, and also making similar changes to the non-coastal zoning ordinance as it relates to the scenic resource protection overlay zone. As part of this proposal, we are proposing to eliminate the scenic highway protection overlay zone and incorporate those current development standards and regulations into the SRP zone. So we would be eliminating an extra redundant zone. More specifically, our purposes are to clarify the text and maps of the scenic resource chapters of both the goals policies and programs and resource appendix. As I mentioned, eliminate the duplication by eliminating the SHP zone and incorporating that in the SRP. Amending the SRP discretionary permit threshold criteria to simplify the grading thresholds, to reduce the area threshold for vegetation removal, and to add criteria for construction and new structures and reconstruction of existing structures. Also, staff had proposed that the type of discretionary permit be changed from a conditional use permit to a planned development permit. A conditional use permit, just so we understand the difference, a conditional use permit is a permit required for use that may not be allowed in that particular zone. It could only be allowed if certain compatibility findings can be made. A planned development permit is for site plan review and design. What is trying to be achieved with that discretionary permit is make sure that the design of whatever is being proposed is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and in this case, compatible with the scenic resource, which is trying to be preserved as it exists today. CUPs typically have timeframes associated with them, so they're only perhaps good for a fixed period of time, let's say ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, at which time the permit has to be totally applied for anew. A planned development permit does not have a time constraint. Both permits are required, however, to go through CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act process. They both have to have a public hearing, and they are both conditioned, and enforcement is virtually identical. So staff had been proposing that we change the type of permit from a CUP to a planned development permit. The planning commission, in their deliberations, felt that they wanted to recommend to your board that the CUP be retained for, let's say, non-residential-type land uses, but were fine with the staff-proposed recommended change for a planned development permit for residential uses and accessory uses thereunder. In our zoning code, we don't use the term residential use, so it's actually under the title of dwellings. So in the ordinance language, you'll see that distinction made.
So we currently have, it's currently a CUP then?
No, it's currently a CUP. It's fairly complex. There is a table on Exhibit 7 that actually lists the differences between what exists today and what was being proposed. And then that brings us to what happened in the planning commission. On June 5th, 2008, the planning commission conducted a public hearing. They took public testimony, and they ultimately recommended, as I mentioned, some changes. The first change is that, as I stated, that the SRP would require a planned development permit for residential uses, but non-residential uses would still require a CUP. Staff was also proposing that an exemption be incorporated in the ordinance whereby if the property owner could demonstrate that the project was not visible within one-half mile of any public road, trail, park, recreation area, or preserve, or lake, that they would not need to get a discretionary permit. Planning commission felt that half hour, a half mile was perhaps maybe appropriate in some cases, but not appropriate in other cases, and they didn't feel comfortable in recommending that particular exemption. After the public hearing, we realized that the planning commission's recommendations needed to be also reflected in other amendments being proposed, and we attempted to get the planning commission to address those, and it was brought to our attention that we really needed to rehear that at the planning commission, so we issued another eight-page legal ad and conducted a public hearing on July 10th. Additional testimony was received. The planning commission basically accepted staff's recommendations for changes to their resolution, and that's reflected in your board packet. So that pretty much brings us to the day. Last week, we did receive an additional letter dated September 3rd from Pat Baggerley, representing the Environmental Coalition, basically raising three issues. One was an assertion that the change of general plan policy language was a weakening of the policy. She also felt that by allowing a PD permit instead of a CUP, that the current requirement of development being compatible with existing and potential land uses would be omitted. And then she basically, her third point was that she concurred with the planning commission's recommendation to not include an exemption for grading, not visible within one-half mile of public road, trail, recreation area, et cetera. In the board letter, I did respond to those. We looked at, in fact, we have the language here. The existing wording is "no discretionary development shall be approved," which would significantly degrade or destroy a significant view or vista. And the proposed wording is "all discretionary development shall be cited and designated to prevent significant degradation of the scenic view or vista." We reviewed this with county council, and from administrative standpoint, there is no difference really in terms of, yes, the words on the page appear different, but there's no intent to weaken the policy, and we believe that there would be no weakening of the code as a result of that. Should also be pointed out that in the proposed policy, we're also expanding it to include efforts to minimize alteration of natural topography, vegetation, and lighting to avoid silhouetting of structures on ridge tops, and to utilize native plants, colors, and materials. As such, we think that's actually strengthening the policy as opposed to weakening it. With regard to PD permits and CUPs, the ordinance code, maybe I have a citation here in your board letter, that is to the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Basically, the finding for a planned development permit is that it be compatible with existing land uses. And in this particular case, we think that is most certainly the appropriate discretionary permit when we're dealing with issues of aesthetics in site design and structures. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Anybody have any? I got a couple, but you want to go ahead or?
I'd like you to talk a little further about perhaps the planning commissioner's discussion on the exemption for grading within the half mile from the public road and why they chose not to provide that. Is there any more you could shed light on, the discussion they had on that?
Well, one example that was given by one of the commissioners was that they felt that certain types of grading beyond one-half mile may in fact be quite visible, and so they were uncomfortable with the half mile. The problem is, is that if we try to write an exemption, you have to set a fixed distance because visible from where? Fifteen miles away, half mile away, a mile away, there has to be some sort of measurement distance, and the commission felt that half mile was not sufficient, but they weren't prepared to recommend any fixed distance. That was my understanding or recollection of the comments that were made by the commissioner.
Supervisor Long, can I weigh in a little bit in terms of at least my understanding? And I think staff to some agreed, at least when some commissioners raised this issue and that is that, you know, the issue of these scenic ridge lines and stuff, there are lots of places where, because particularly it's unique to the two places where this is going to apply, the Ojai Valley and these Ventoux Park area and stuff. You have, you know, as you're coming into Ojai from Santa Paula and you're dropping down, you have all kinds of different places where, you know, you may have just a direct view of the ridge line that may technically be more than a, you know, a half a mile away, yet very much be, you know, a significant impact in terms of sort of a ridge line, you know, destruction, or a ridge line, you know, an inappropriate ridge line development stuff. So by having the exception in there, the original proposed exception in there, you couldn't do anything about it, and the exception was there. Now, you're not saying, you're not saying things can't happen, you're just saying, just make sure you follow the guidelines. So by not having the exception, you're just saying, just follow the guidelines because it's just too hard to say half mile is a sufficient distance to not have that impact. That's, and I believe, you know, from listening to testimony, that staff shared that assessment, that there were lots of roads and stuff that would have that visual perception.
If I may, with Ventoux Park, when you're dropping down from the Kno gray down into Thousand Oaks, the first thing you see is that whole ridge line, that's certainly one and a half mile away, so I want to make sure that what happens up there isn't seen from the freeway.
Let me ask you a question, just so I can get this in simple terms so I can understand this. If, let's say that area that Supervisor Parks just talked about, if I have a ten-acre parcel up on there and I wanted to build my home, what would be the difference now between what we currently have and what's being proposed?
Well, in terms of Ventoux Park area, the SRP zone is keyed to fifty cubic yards of grading. The ordinance does not currently include structures, and it doesn't include overcovering of or destruction of vegetation. So the first change is that those criteria would be added and would require discretionary permit.
So anytime you were going to touch anything up there to grade to put a house, now you're going to have to have a permit for it?
That's right. What we discovered in the Santa Monica Mountains in particular, which some, only some portions are subject to SRP, is vegetation removal or grading that did not have a permit. And then the property owner would be coming in and saying, well, this is on a pre-grated pad. I'm not moving more than fifty cubic yards. I don't need a conditional use permit. That can be problematical because then we have, and this would make explicit that vegetation removal would not allow you to destroy the vegetation, then come in and say, oh, well, I have to put my house here because the vegetation's already been destroyed. That was a close, essentially a loophole that we felt.
Okay, so if in this area I'm looking at, I want to put this house right here, and I have to destroy that vegetation to put the house there, now you're saying you can't do that?
Well, no, we would, if that is the only place on the property that could be built upon, we wouldn't be saying you're prohibited. It would have to be constructed and designed in a manner to remove as little vegetation as possible. It would also have to not silhouette against the ridge line under the proposed regulations.
Which is new.
Which is new. And meet the other criteria that are in there. Even with the CUP as a process now, we know of no case where we've actually denied a permit. They've actually designed and been quite creative in redesigning their projects to lessen the visual effects from the surrounding area, so.
So if somebody puts a house and they want to put a large yard on that, they can't do that because that destroys natural vegetation?
No. It's really a little bit, just have a little bit of a difference in what we have now. Almost everybody in a scenic resource protection overlay zone grades. The criteria, the way that it's out now, it is, the only exemption is the planning director for all grading except, and it's an excavation which is less than two feet in depth or fifty cubic yards. I mean, almost everybody has to come in anyway.
Yeah, right.
But what it is, is we only get at then the grading. We don't actually get at the structures necessarily. So you can come in and grade over fifty cubic yards and come in and get a conditional use permit, but we don't really get to take a look at exactly what is happening. So you can degrade the ridge line, not by grading, but by the subsequent construction. And so that's what we're trying to get at. A lot of the parcel maps or the track maps that were created actually have specific requirements. I mean, we still to this day go back into old track maps that were approved twenty years ago and said, oh, yeah, on this particular lot, you have to build four hundred feet back from a ridge line, or on this particular lot, you're not allowed lit tennis courts. But those become harder and harder to keep track on. So really, what we're wanting to do is to say, there's a little bit more than we need to look at besides grading, besides fifty cubic yards of grading, because that's an unreasonable threshold, it seems to me, because sometimes people come in and they're moving sixty cubic yards of grading or doing things that we're really not even trying to get at, but this threshold requires them to get a conditional use permit. So I think getting a planned development permit and not putting an expiration date on it, and actually getting at the subsequent building, the lighting, the setbacks, you know, we're not trying to deny anybody their right to build, we're just trying to protect the ridge line.
I guess I'm just trying to get to a position to understand that, and I understand that the views shared that we want to protect. I just want to make sure we don't, where somebody want to purchase a nice piece of property, and now all of a sudden, I just lost half my value in my property because of what we're doing here. I want to make sure we're trying to protect that.
I don't see that happening is because they come through here almost without exception in the conditional use permit anyway, unless as a part of an old track map that the building envelope was already graded. And those are so few and far between anymore that even when the building envelope was graded, most people that come in now don't want to be restricted with that building envelope. They want to build the house that they want to build, so they're in here for the conditional use permit process anyway.
So the only thing I see different than here might be some of the color requirements, which is something you're trying to blend more into the hillsides.
I think something that we're trying to blend a little bit more in, and the language is a little bit that we're, you know, it looks like we're really trying to work with them by saying, we want to minimize the alteration of natural topography, and we want to utilize native plants, and we want to avoid silhouetting. So these are all the things we want to avoid and minimize, but it doesn't say anywhere in here that you absolutely will not be able to construct something. There is just a process that we want to go through.
Okay.
Chairman. If I may, you're also folding in the scenic highway protection into the scenic resource protection, so we'll no longer have a scenic highway. When you had a discrepancy between the two, did you take the most protective portion of to put into the SRP? The ones that were most conservative in terms of protecting scenery when you had a choice between the two, if they were inconsistent?
Well, a little bit of history. The SRP was developed first, and then it was at least a decade, decade and a half later when the SHP. The SHP is a newer zone. We learned a lot of lessons from the SRP, and we incorporated those in the SHP. Yes. Now, we've learned even more lessons, so we're refining the language another step. But in essence, you are correct. We're folding the standards of the SHP zone into the SRP and then eliminating the SHP.
And have you taken the most restrictive portions of either one, and that's what is ending up in the SRP, that was it?
Yes.
So where I may have read in the paper that this might be weakening it, you see this as strengthening it.
Oh, and our view is strengthening it.
Right. And I know Supervisor Bennett and myself both brought this forward because we're really looking forward to phase two of this, which will come back, I understand, in the spring, and that will be looking specific requirements for the Ojai Valley and Ventoux Park, if I'm correct.
Correct. And also to do some cleanup language in the lecture with area plan with regard to protected trees.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yep, okay, then we're going to do some public, we have Pat Baggerley.
Good afternoon, Chairman Floyd and members of the board.
This guy's waving his card behind him.
Oh, bring your cards up to Roberta. You don't have a sign out there. About five people asked me, who do I give my card to? Put it out in front.
We're trying to get audience participation here.
I'll start at you here. My name is Pat Baggerley. I'm representing the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. My name is Pat Baggerly, I'm representing the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. Looking back over the last 20 years of reviewing the relationships between requests from public bodies and what staff has produced, this is the only time I've seen a proposal that is not even close to what was requested. Going back to June 2007, what the board asked for was additional ridge line protection programs in the Ojai Valley, and to strengthen ridge line protection measures for Ventu Park scenic resource protection overlay zone. What you have before you amounts to giving away protections that previous boards have adopted and maintained for years. Once these protections are given away, it's almost impossible to get them back. For example, the proposal to allow an applicant to determine if impacts to a view shed are Once your constituents see the results of view sheds and ridge lines that are not protected, they will not like the results. If we stop and think about the impacts of the proposed changes for a minute, it's obvious that while the changes will apply legally to the areas outside incorporated cities, the changes will mostly impact people that live within the tent cities. As Mr. Smith said, this is a very complex project, not easy to understand all of this. Based on this fact, I would like to suggest that you continue this hearing for at least 90 days, to provide ample time to fully understand the impacts that they might be facing if the changes before you are adopted. Speaking frankly, the Environmental Coalition believes if you adopt this, you will be in a worse position, position than if staff had never worked on it. It's worse than if they had ever done nothing. So I want to speak to you a little bit about the scenic highway protection overlay zone, incorporating the scenic, into the scenic protection overlay zone. Yesterday, tried to call Caltrans, just started on this, and when we had the highway protection zone designated, it comes on to the state maps, so, you know, like they put up the poppies on the road, people when they go out to plan their trips, a lot of times they'll look at those scenic highway protection areas, and it's on the map, and it brings revenue to this county. And I am concerned that by incorporating the scenic highway protection overlay zone into the scenic, the overall scenic protection zone, that some of the weight of this protection is going to be lost, and I think that should be looked into. There are guidelines, and one person I talked to at Caltrans today said that the scenic highway protection guidelines say that the highway is protected all the way to the ridge line, so they don't have a quarter mile protection, like was being proposed from our county. So there's some things that I think need cleaning up. The other thing I'd like to say is, I know there are people out here, you know, from Ventu Park who want to testify. I wish they had looked at all these documents, I wish they had looked at the general plan, and the ordinance, and examined it, and spent a lot of time to see what they're supporting. Because what's coming in the second half is what we thought we were going to get, and I would be here supporting those protections, but staff has been putting forth some things that I think we'll regret later. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Pratt.
Chair and members of the board, I'm William Pratt. I reside at 141 Hope Road in the Ventu Park area of Newberry Park, and I've been there since 1987. I am president of the Ventu Park Fire Safety Council, and I'm the informal president of the informal Ventu Park Municipal Advisory Committee. Furthermore, I'm vice president of Keep the Sespy Wild. However, today, I'm representing my personal views as a resident and as a person formally educated in environmental planning. I'm addressing the issue of ridge line protection for Ojai and Ventu Park, and specifically, the ridge in Ventu Park, of which I'm most familiar. I'd like to make three points regarding the ownership, visual impact, and fire safety aspects of this ridge. Probably the general public in Thousand Oaks is unaware this ridge is private land, given all the open space in Thousand Oaks. At least one of the principal owners of this property, of this area, is well intentioned in their stewardship of this land, and nonetheless, may be concerned by this type of potential de facto taking. And I think we should call it for what it is, and I think Mr. Foye's comments are directed in that area. Changing this from a CUP to a planned unit development is both, I would consider egregious and onerous. This is, after all, a rural county, and people like to do what they can do with their property without going through a PUD to put up a chicken coop. And I caution you on that, and I look forward to the second phase, taking those type of concerns into consideration. But private ownership, however best intentioned, can change hands. And the county's general planning position, unlike the city of Thousand Oaks, is property owners can build on their lots without much interference. And despite what I've heard today, everything I've seen of built in the county in Ventu Park has pretty much been laissez faire, in terms of architectural standards, in terms of out square footage, and we've got some gigantic 6,000 square foot boxes that have been stuck on the hillside in the last 10 years. And in my discussions with county planning years ago, as far as the, as a member of the municipal advisory committee, they said, if you've got a legally defined lot, you can do what you want with it. And I've seen evidence of that. So we've got a scenic reserve here, but in practice, I don't really see the county following through on that. This ridge is the predominant geological feature in the southern viewscape of Thousand Oaks, and as a monumental piece of open space, is taken for granted by the public. Its ruggedness has defied development, not its legal status. Again, this is a gray question, this is one of those environmental problems that's neither black or white, and we've got conflicting issues. Given the luxury ridge line development occurring all over the Santa Monicas where cost is no object, it's easy to imagine this ridge has become the object of intense desire for developer somewhere out there. There is a public aesthetic interest in maintaining the visual status quo, and that interest will be ill served if we don't perceive, proceed in a conscious planning process, starting now. I mean, you know, you know as well as I do, that these political pressures, this is a prime piece of real estate. And I can see where somebody would approach this board, and they would love to build a hilltop villa there, or a hilltop set of luxury condos, it's readily accessible from trail or road, so that's a realistic threat. The recurring urban wildland fire fiasco in California that has been predicted for decades is clearly a public policy failure. It is the result of willful negligence on the part of county supervisors all over the state to just say no. It is sadly the success of greed over wisdom. If there's one thing I hear from people all over the state, indeed the country, is why do they let people build in those places? We're all paying hundreds of millions of dollars a year to fight those fires, because some people have built in them. And that's no less true in this particular area. We've spent tens of thousands of dollars fighting fires on this ridge line in the past. And that in itself has got some big implications for your vegetation removal considerations. This ridge, given its perfect storm combination of vigorous chaparral, steep topography, and exposure to Santa Ana winds, could not safely be developed without extraordinary mitigations of profound visual impact, such as stripping off the top half of the vegetation on the ridge. The state is considering thousand-foot setbacks in these type of zones, up from the 100 feet current, currently required. This ridge is only 1,000 feet high, so if they're going to get 1,000 foot setback from properties, it's pretty much going to take all the vegetation off of it. That's a difficult issue. In summary, people don't know the ridge is unprotected, and its character could be changed with little public recourse. Now, of course, this is taken out of context of what I've heard today, I'm getting educated as we go. The ridge does have an imposing visual impact on the Canal Valley, and frames our everyday lives with a unique sense of place. There are critical public safety issues surrounding it that need to be addressed on many levels. Certainly, we don't want to allow it to get worse. These same issues can be found in Ojai, an area where I have many friends and visit frequently.
We got a sum up here.
I'm right on the last sentence, I'm sorry. In short, giving respectful consideration to the existing private property interests, it is finally time to replace the benign neglect of this area with a considerate and hopefully visionary planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
Sure.
There may be some miscommunication, understanding regarding what is a planned development, not planned unit development, but a planned development, it requires a permit to get a house instead of a CUP, if I understand.
Yeah, I did misunderstand that term, I'm sorry.
It's just a, you need to get a permit to get a house, as opposed to a ministerial.
Okay.
So it'd still be discretionary, but instead of a CUP, which means you come back every 10 years or something for your house that you got approved 10 years ago, you'd get a planned development permit, you still go through the same process. The staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that was the change there.
That's actually more what we, what we experience in the city.
Right, and that's what we're looking at in the second phase, is to more mirror the city. But my question to you is, are you for this, or are you against this?
In concept, I'm for it. I'd hate to see, and this includes rural residents in Ojai, I'd hate to see it where their lives are clamped down so tightly, that they cannot express themselves as individuals on their property. Now, I think the intent, if I hear it correctly, is that our fear is that a large scale developer will want to take opportunity of these sites. In that case, I'm against that. I think for the, for the reasons I mentioned.
Like the 6,000 square foot houses that are going up?
Well, if you're traveling cane and road over to Malibu, all of a sudden, you see giant mansions, because they don't, you know, rugged territory is no deterrent for those type of developers. So I think in principle, I think we need to be careful with the scenic resource.
I think we have to be careful, we say, not the word developers, but homeowners, because usually those are one, somebody buying a lot and building a home.
I think in a case where you've got hundreds of acres, though, which is true in some of these cases, that those properties will not be purchased by homeowners, they'd be purchased by people that would probably want to re-subdivide them into...
Yeah, but I think we've got a lot of restrictions on that subdivision, don't we? I don't think we're going to be seeing people divide those down into one and two and three acre, I don't know what we have, 10, 20, 40 acre minimums up there, so we do have some... And I can go back to your original thing, is that, you know, we've got to be careful about taking people's property rights when we do this.
Well, it's, it's a, it's an artful balance, and I think we need to look for language in this, that in my experience, if we give the planning department a directive that says basically, we don't want anything to happen here, then if somebody's shut, shut down from actually making changes with their property, I think that's detrimental to the community.
Well, at that point, then, if we get that far, then we've got to buy that property from those people and give them a reasonable price for that, because we've taken something from them.
That's, that was why my comment was, was about a de facto taking, of which, again, this is a gray, a gray zone. So I think there has to be a compelling public interest to impose this type of restriction on what people can do with their property. But I do believe the process needs to be there, we can't walk away from it, as they do in Texas, and say, oh, well, we don't zone anything here because we don't believe in that. And Texas has its problems because of that. And I think furthermore, getting back to my comment about fire safety, is that allowing people to build in these wildland urban interface zones has been a disaster for the state. And that is something that we actually need to seriously look at. And Ventu Park is a, it's a ground zero for this.
Right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Neva or Niva Williams?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board, staff, and council. My name is Niva Williams, and as a native Californian, I had the privilege of growing up in Altadena, with the Angeles National Forest as my playground, and we played there every day. Now I live in Ojai, and I currently enjoy the Los Padres National Forest as my background. Having had this wonderful childhood experience of exploring the nature trails of the Angeles, and now a wonderful adulthood, hiking Pratt Trails, Shelf Road, and other view shed trails in Ventura County, I wholeheartedly support the scenic resource protection intent, and the intent being to protect the natural beauty and scenic resources of our great state. I come before you today to discuss and hopefully change the language of the SRP, to allow homeowners, fortunate enough to live in this zoning, to build pools on graded lots, without obtaining a conditional use permit to do so. I am currently representing the Katz family residing at 525 Rimrock Road in Thousand Oaks. They have recently purchased their home, it was built in 2005, and they wish to complete the backyard design, including a pool and a spa, as shown on the original house plans. The lot is already graded and ready to receive a pool. I did bring along to this meeting some photographs showing the site and the parcel. And Linda Parks was gracious enough yesterday to come out and visit the, visit the site. And if I may say so with her permission, that she agrees with my views and the homeowner, that the requirement for applying and receiving a conditional use permit is unreasonable. I feel that we have far more important issues before this county, state, and country than to overregulate the homeowner wishing to dig a hole in his or her backyard. And I think our tax dollars will be better spent elsewhere. One final point I would like to bring up, a pool is a great resource in itself when we have brush fires in our neighborhoods. And the city of Thousand Oaks recently experienced such a brush fire August 26th. Thanks to our fabulous firefighters, this fire was quickly under control. However, I am sure that any firefighter would agree, that in time of need, when hydrants are no longer close enough, and the tanker truck is low, that the closest pool is a valuable resource. And so please retain the intent of this ordinance, but do not overregulate it. And I would like you to vote today to exempt pools on graded pads in the SRP overlay from having to obtain a CUP. And to have them follow the zone clearance, safety in building guidelines, and laws that currently exist in other non-SRP areas of the county. I thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Foye, the speaker is correct, Ms. Williams is correct, that this is something that I do support. If you, what she handed to us, if you look at the last page, they've got a completely graded lot already. And while I think our intent here is to avoid structures that you can see from a distance, certainly digging a hole in the ground and putting water in it isn't a structure that you can see from a distance. And so when we're concluded with our public testimony, I will ask that we consider incorporating that exemption in the SRP ordinance as before us today, and I'll wait until we get to that part.
But she was talking about a CUP, we're talking about moving off a CUP.
This is, this is specifically to exempt pools from the SRP ordinance.
SRP total, okay.
Yes, whether it's CUP or DP.
Anybody.
This would just exempt it so they don't have to go through, it would be like any other property.
Just go over to the counter and get a regular.
On graded pads only, if it's already been graded. And Mr. Smith has provided some wording, and I'll bring that forward at the end of our public testimony, if that's okay?
So they're going to be comfortable with that?
We, if you want to go into it now, we can.
Okay, no, that's fine, all right, okay. All right, Mitch Griffin?
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Thomas Wolfe? You're Janet?
Yes, I'm Janet, we're going to trade.
Okay.
I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Sounds good, no problem.
My name is Janet Wolfe, I reside at 1110 Brubell Street, Ochsord, California. I am speaking to a property that's in one of the areas that you're planning to rezone, it's on Highway 33, and the property itself is known as Pine Mountain Inn. In my opinion, overlays were created to preserve the unique identity of specific geographic areas of Ventura County. For instance, open spaces were in general terms to preserve farms that support feeding our community. our community. From my perspective, an overlay zone is a change of property use, and we ought to call it what it is. For those who live in these areas, it is not simply a matter of maintaining current use, but restricting or altering the ability of the landowners to utilize their property the way they have historically been able to conduct, in this case, their livelihood. Highway 33 is currently designated as the scenic highway overlay zone, and has been that way for many years. We have grave concerns about changing the zoning again. We were not notified about amortization of our restaurant property until January of 2007, which is a direct result from the open space zoning 20, 25 years prior. We are, we were further informed that we have been running our restaurant out of county compliance since 1985. We have spent an inordinate amount of time and money attempting to work with the county to reopen our restaurant. We did apply through a letter from our attorney to the county for conditional use permit processed about a year ago. We have not received any written response to date. The planning department has spent some of the $1,000 we were required to give the department along with our application. That does not include the five-digit numbers we've paid lawyers. Since this application has not been processed, we are more than a little concerned about the impact of the new zoning application on a process we have already started good faith in our particular area and our concern. How much more do we have to pay? Will dropping the scenic highway protection overlay zone further unnecessarily burden property owners in that zone to be in compliance with the new scenic resource protection zone? Highway 33 property owners recently met. It was clear the impression voiced by each individual was that the county was trying to close them down, and no one knows why. Have the requirements dictated by this zone taken into account the unique qualities of each location noted in the affected area? I would hope that your second run-through on this does just that, because you have so many different unique areas you're considering under this zoning as a blanket. It appears the intent of this current push to change zoning is based on simplification of terms. Is this proposal what you asked for? Why does the proposal include a section stating there will be additional criteria creating, created during this process? How much more work has to be done? Having the zoner overlay rules cause landowners to be subject to additional burdens and hence added fines for noncompliance that other county property owners have not been subject to. And this is for the benefit of the general public, and other, other landowners in the county don't face the same criteria. Have property owners in the zone area been compensated for the extra work, money, time they must spend on their property, or loss of property use due to simply owning property in Ventura County? In this case, we certainly have it. What compensation might property owners receive, be they farmers, homeowners, business owners, expect from the county for the burden placed on their properties that are not placed equally on Ventura County owners? A handful of property owners should not bear the financial burdens placed on them because other Ventura County property owners want some type of pre-divine view on others' homesites. On Highway 33, most traffic during the week involves local owners or business traffic, not sightseers. Motorcycle riders are the majority of the weekend travelers, and most of them are going a bit too fast to enjoy the scenery anyway. The affected property owners, there is a list in there, but it does, it's not very well defined on what changes really might occur. It sounds like it will be a case-by-case, based on the county's interpretation, when it comes to the owner, one-on-one. These zoning overlays to be, appear to be more in line with the homeowners association that is being forced on landowner versus the person who intentionally seeks out a homeowner association area to live in for restricted living controls that they desire. Highway 33 is a unique entity within Ventura County due to the self-regulation nature of the topography. The weather is more in line with the Northwest states. There are freezing winter snow, falling car-crushing boulders, and washed-out roads due to flooding frequently. Other hardships landowners currently face are the same hardships faced by landowners since Mexico-owned California. There is no electricity, no phone service, no local fire service. The fires are a state issue, not a county, and a lack of emergency services. Not sure how many, how any zoning overlay will change the history of the use for the area. The forest department owns 95% of this area, not much room for growth on any level. In the end, I would like to voice again our concern about the overlay zone in the Highway 33 area, as outlined above, and remind you of the front-page newspaper article earlier this month that identified the lack of standardization, processing, and fees related to land use. I would understand that this would try to move in that direction, but there's no defined criteria that would lend me to believe that will happen because of this zone overlay change.
Okay, we've got to, we've got to wrap it up there.
Last sentence.
Real quick.
We're concerned about the conditional use permit versus the planned development permit. We feel that would probably seal the fate of the historical Pine Mountain Inn that's been there since 1938 and appears on a marker of maps across the country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could provide a clarification? The Pine Mountain Inn is not non-conforming by virtue of the overlay. It is non-conforming because it's a commercial use in the open space zone. They've been encouraged to apply for a CUP to continue the time in which that non-conforming use. Their concern relative to SR, the SRP, although understandable, is in fact, they're already designated with the SHP, and as was stated earlier, the, the standards are virtually identical. So the ordinance amendment today will not have, in our view, a substantial effect on what they're proposing to do.
Thomas Wolfe, you going to speak?
Yeah. I only have five of these chairs or something. My concern is basically, is Pine Mountain Inn going to be able to operate or not? I think there are some other people here. There's about three or four businesses on Highway 33 within the scenic area. Most of them have been there for many, many years. If you've got the photos, we can go real quickly. On Page 1, it kind of shows what Pine Mountain Inn was when I bought it. Page 2 shows the same thing. Page 3 shows what it looks like now. Page 4 shows last Saturday, how busy it can be. Page 5 shows a stage that some cowboys used, they made, they built. Page 6 shows them using it. Page 7 shows what we did this last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 5, 6, and 7. And we had a rock climbing club up there. And you can see their schedule was very detailed and very active. So anyway, Pine Mountain is an active place, and I'm just going to go through, through this really quick. Pine Mountain Inn is located about 31 miles north of Ojai on Highway 33. Its elevation is 4,200 feet. We have dry, clear, and frozen cold, snowy, icy winters. We have no electricity delivered. There are no phone service lines. Cell phones don't work. Our electric power is of, is solar or general generator. Our water is delivered by a well, by a solar pump. We have the only flush toilet within 30 miles, which is kind of significant. There are a lot of motorcycle accidents and bikes and fires. Our satellite phone is the only possible communication for reporting accidents. If you crash right in front of Pine Mountain Inn and break both legs, the only way you're going to get taken care of is we send motorcycles 30 miles either direction to the nearest phone, or we use a satellite phone and can call an emergency and hopefully a, a medical When you're, when you get stuck in the snow during the winter, we'll take you in and keep you overnight from freezing. We'll have a lot of chili, hot chocolate coffee, and maybe a little beer. And it's just another thing we do to take care of the people up there. I have operated Pine Mountain Inn for 31 years. For the last three years, I've been told I cannot open Pine Mountain Inn for businesses by the Ventura County Planning Department. I have maintained my business license and personally have an active one. All of the issues about running the business are related to previous zoning changes. I would like to know if I'll be able to reopen. I'm 70 years old and only have so many years left. If I cannot reopen the inn on this new zoning, do I have the right to sue Ventura County for devaluation of the property? I believe Pine Mountain Inn provides many services for, for people traveling Highway 33, and I would like to contend, continue those services without further complications. And also, we've kind of joined together with the Wheel, the Hot Springs, and the Half-Horse Station. I know it's a very small group of people. And anyway, we just want to know if we can open and stay open.
Thank you. Okay, Stephen Jeff, Jeffreyon? I don't know if I, I didn't think I said that right.
Yes, hi, my name is Stephen Jeffreyon, I'm with Lauterbach Associate Architects. But today here, I'm as a resident of 208 Canyon Road in Venti Park. And I fully support the recommendations for approval of this measure. But I also encourage you, as you explore this and craft it, to further look at the Venti Park area in regards to the fire safety issues that are involved there. I know that, that I haven't had a chance to review all the documents related to this proposal, but it, it sounds like you're on the right track. I, I moved to Venti Park in 1991, and, and over the years, we've experienced quite a bit of development up in the area there. As you may be aware or not, Venti Park has one access to it, and that's via Lynn Road onto Newbury Lane. And all the residents have to travel through there. It is a substandard condition. It started many, many years ago with the cabin lots back there, and, and it's, it's been allowed to just exist and grow as, as we go through there. I want to thank Linda Parks for, for initiating and helping us start our Fire Safety Council, and I want to thank our president for being here, supporting us, and, and we have some challenges that we have to deal with. We're dealing with existing neighborhoods, private roads, private development, and we're kind of stuck with what we have there. We realize that. But on, on another note, we realize that we're looking at future development here. We're looking at houses that are yet to be built and ridge lines that are, we're trying to protect, and I fully encourage that. But the other important reason I'm here is, is to look at, because I don't know what the extent of that ridge line is. And I know in the Venti Park area, there are various different rid lines, but basically, when you look up the hill, you see everything up there. And as more and more development gets built up in there, there should be some sort of restrictions or guidelines for those new developments to, that are affecting all the other people that are living down below them. And I realize that a homeowner has a private right to develop their land, but I also have a blue line stream in my backyard. And I know that as a resident that has a stream in their backyard, I affect anybody that lives downstream from me, and I can be held liable for anything that happens regarding that. Well, the same would follow suit with any developments that are falling above me. And we're talking about rid lines and watersheds and all of those, that water funnels through my backyard. So they, they should have some recourse regarding that. The primary thing, though, is, is in terms of the restrictions for development. You know, we have substandard roads up there, they're 20 feet wide, if that. We have no regulations regarding people parking along the roads, and we understand that. We're working with the individual homeowners with that to try to create some sort of safe passageways along the way to allow fire access vehicles to get up in that, those areas. So I encourage you to realize that Venti Park is a very special area, and that, that ridge line protection is great. Yes, we all love scenery, but I think safety comes first, and especially for all the residents that, that live in that area there. So I just encourage you to review those in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly LaRue, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. The item before the supervisors today is a very positive step in the right direction to further protect Ventura County scenic resources. It's important to note that this is the first step in a multi-step process. This first step makes amendments to the county's general plan and the non-coastal zoning ordinance, and it will apply to all the unincorporated lands that have scenic resource protection or scenic highway protection overlay zones upon them. Beautiful view sheds in Lake Sherwood, Lake Piru, Lake Casitas, and Lake Matilah, as well as the beautiful drive along Highway 33 north of Matilah Road will be protected. It also will protect areas specified in the area plans for Ojai Valley and Thousand Oaks. I strongly believe in property rights, but I also believe that by protecting our scenic resources, we will preserve and enhance property values. There are provisions to allow a home to be built along with its usual accessory uses, such as swimming pools and low decks. But conditional use permits will be required for all other uses, which I support. With the clarifications regarding grading and the expansion of the area from which a visual impact can be observed, I think this balances the rights of property owners with those of the larger community. Ventura County is a large area with very different needs, depending on where one lives. These recommendations should be supported, and I look forward to the next step in the process. And I'd like to thank the board for their attention to their constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Razno?
I'm Tess.
Tess, okay. And then Carl Swoski?
I'm Carl Swoski. I live at 555 South Venti Park Road, and I sympathize with a gentleman who's 70 years old, because I am as well. I moved to this location as a retirement home about six years ago because of the view. One-third of the view has been blocked by the building next to me, causing me to lose, according to the appraiser, $50,000 in home value, and it would cost me $75,000 in legal fees to try to recoup that. So in favor of maintaining a 25-foot height limit, among other things. My experience has not been enforced or measured by the planning department or building and safety. Let's see, I've made some notes on a 3x5 card. I'll be here, and hopefully I can finish in about three minutes. It seems to me that there's been arbitrary discretion allowed in the building heights, no measurement, a lack of full disclosure on those who buy property in the area. In fact, I informed the potential buyer and the real estate people that this was open space zoning, not residential, and they said, "Oh, there's no such thing as open space zoning." So there was a little bit of lying going on until they finally got to the planning department and found out it was open space, meaning you have to build 10 feet from the property's sidelines instead of 5. But they ended up building the house 30 feet high instead of 25. Let's see. There's no verification of that. I was told by the planning... Let's see. There's no verification of that. I was told by the planning office, well, the Building and Safety does not measure that. They refer to the planning office. Nobody actually measures it to the final, the top of the ridge, the house roof to the final finished grade. And I was told by the head of, at that time, the Building and Safety, that they didn't have the tool, so I could give him thirty-foot measuring tape, and you can get this for a hundred dollars. It's a laser measuring device. So I measured the house, and it's above the standard, but they refused to do anything about it. Now, I know this may not be directly on the issue that you're talking about, but unless there's serious consideration of enforcement of the height limit, property values are going to be going down. And in the process, I'm looking for a house in a more friendly area as far as protecting our rights are concerned, and even building. I'm interested in possibly building something for myself, and I've looked at this same type of situation in Los Angeles County and Santa Barbara and city, other smaller cities. The planning department accepts the view or the stamp of the civil engineer, the civil engineer of the height restriction. The civil engineer hires a surveyor who's not licensed but who measures the roof line. He doesn't measure to the final grade, so it didn't really, it wasn't measured, and nobody verifies that. Let's see. As far as that, somebody mentioned fifty cubic yards of grading. Well, there was no permit granted, and eight hundred cubic yards of dirt were removed. I counted the trucks that came by next door to my house. I suggested once upon a time to Linda Parks about an ombudsman for neighbors for new construction issues, and she seemed to be sympathetic to this. I also talked to a couple of assistants in Supervisor Flynn's office, but nobody seems to have the power to do anything about that or to make stronger the verification of the code itself. Let's see. Appeals can cost a lot of money, as I suggested, even to have an appeal within the county bureaucracy. I happen to be a retired sociologist from Cal State, and I'm studying bureaucratitis. So if anyone needs any suggestions on how to handle this bureaucratically, I'm open, and I've written and printed and published a few papers on the subject. So I have no way of regaining my lost fifty thousand dollars, and I don't think it's worthwhile to invest seventy-five thousand dollars more to try and regain fifty thousand when I might lose anyway. So the main point I'd like to make is do everything possible to preserve the view shed. There's an important, similar situation going on right now in the city of Ventura, as some of you may know, to try and preserve the view shed there. And I'm in favor of maximum enforcement of the, and measurement by the planning department, Building and Safety, and grading and so on.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's all of our speakers.
Chairman Foy?
Yes.
There are some great comments, and I appreciate hearing them. And I also am very thankful that you came to this hearing, and it will certainly help us as we move forward. Mr. Slawski, definitely building heights is a major concern. The City of Thousand Oaks scenic, their ridge line protection ordinance actually does limit how high buildings can be, as well as the square footage of buildings in the ridge line area. And that's one way they look to protect them, as well as things like burmging and setbacks and some vegetative screening. So there are things that can be done. Currently, our scenic resource protection ordinance doesn't do anything other than talk about grading, not the actual structure. So I think we're definitely headed in the right direction in terms of trying to protect the scenic resources. And certainly, fire safety is a huge issue, particularly in Ventu Park that I know of. Very narrow streets and parking problems. All the streets are private, most of the streets are private there, which just exacerbates the problem because the county can't go in and require like no parking, or it's something that we have to work with, with the residents. And it is something that, through the Fire Safe Council, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get some assistance there, but it does require cooperation with the residents. I'm thankful of the staff for putting this together. I know this is just the first part of what I'm looking forward to, which is the second part, and that's to start putting some specific requirements down, both for Ojai and Ventu Park. So I'm looking forward to that. This is in keeping with what we've been doing as a county in trying to get rid of inconsistencies. One rule says this, one rule says the opposite. This helps to put it together, so I can understand the planning staff's desire to get both these scenic resources and the scenic highway put together into one. They both revolve around the scenic issues. The one thing that had been mentioned by Ms. Neva Williams is regarding a pool. And I know that the staff's original recommendation to the planning commission was to go ahead and exempt structures that you can't see within a half mile. So there was a lot of discussion about that. This certainly is a, I believe, I don't even consider it a structure, but certainly not something you're going to see within a half mile. So I would ask that, if the board is comfortable with that, that we incorporate this exemption. Right now, there is an exemption from the scenic resource protection requirements on grading if your house is destroyed by a flood or a fire, as one of the parties out here had. So you don't have to go through this. You can replace it. But I would like to also include pools that are constructed on previously approved graded, in a previously approved graded area. Obviously, we have this picture before us. It's a completely graded backyard. I think you're not going to see if there's a hole there or not, particularly when they fill it with water. So I would ask that. And I'm, I do support staff's recommendation here, and I'd be willing to make a motion towards that. And I think that it's more restrict, it's going to help us both in getting enforcement of scenic resource protections, but also move us forward to better requirements for actually protecting the ridge lines in Ojai and Ventu Park. So I am in support of that and would ask that we incorporate all the recommendations in the staff report, which came from the planning commission, as well as including the exemption for pools constructed on previously approved graded areas.
I got a question. When Bruce, when she, Supervisor Parks asked about the scenic highway, the two different ones that were there, and you said that you kind of combined them and was more restrictive. What was, what's more restrictive in that?
Well, let me direct your attention to Exhibit seven. And just without liberating every of this, do some highlights. First of all, with regard to the threshold required for permit, the SRP is based on fifty cubic yards of two-foot-high fill or five-foot-high cut. SHP, on the other hand, is a thousand square feet or ten cubic yards of removal or stockpile. And as we noted in the background report, it's hard when you're in the field to do volumetric measuring. So height is easy to measure, the tools as presented today, as well as we can look at aerials and look at the flat or the plot of the land in terms of an aerial photograph. Those standards are based on two foot in height and thousand square feet. And that's what we're proposing. So it's very similar to the standards that are in the SHP and that were keying off a thousand square feet, but we're also keying off the two-foot height cut or fill. With regard to structures, the SRP zone has no criteria for structures. The SHP says that when you have new structures or reconstruction of greater than fifty percent and expansion of greater than ten percent of an existing structure, that you would need a discretionary permit. In essence, we're moving those same, or suggesting that you incorporate those same standards in the SRP zone. With regard to vegetation removal, the SRP is one acre greater than or equal to one acre before you, for the requirement for a discretionary permit. And the SHP is fairly nebulous. It basically says any protected tree or native long, long established. That's actually an undefined term, and we've had problems administering that. Since everything else has been keyed off a thousand square feet, we're proposing that vegetation removal be the same thousand-foot criteria. We're also suggesting some exceptions, obviously, and you're in a high fire hazard area. There's a need to maintain brush clearance within a hundred feet of that structure. That would be exempt from a planned zone permit or discretionary permit. That would simply by rights.
Yeah, fine.
I could go on.
That's fine. That's fine.
Standards, but those are the principles.
That's the principal ones, okay.
Of the criteria for requiring destruction.
So the biggest one here is that difference between five feet and two feet. That makes a difference.
Right. The original criteria were based off of the Public Works Agency's requirement for engineering on grade.
Right.
And weren't really dealing with the aesthetics. And so we, we said, well, let's look at it from the standpoint of enforceability and also in terms of the aesthetics. And we felt that those criteria were.
Okay.
Can I address the pool issue, please, because I wasn't aware of it before this meeting?
No, you had your, we had the five minutes.
I know, but it came out after, and it hasn't been publicly noticed. And I don't have a copy of what you're presenting. I mean, there's anybody else in the public, and I don't think it should be voted upon today. And I'd like to address it. Can I have a copy, please?
I don't think any of us have a copy of it. I don't have a copy either, so.
I heard that Bruce, somebody had some wording. Wording for the pool issue? I haven't heard red, and I haven't seen it.
It would be, it would be where a pool is to be constructed on previously approved graded area. That's, that would be the exemption.
But I think Neva's asking for also.
No, it's for a graded area. It's already been graded. We're just.
Spas. I heard spas. And I know once there's a pool, then there's a pool house. So we've seen a problem.
That would be a structure. I'm just, this is specific to pools. Spas are a good question.
It should say ground level or something.
Pardon me?
Pools can be very elaborate when you start seeing them. So maybe if you included ground level. I mean, I think this should go maybe on the second phase because this isn't the way that people can know what's being proposed.
Okay.
Can I ask some staff regarding that?
Yeah, you could add the words at grade.
Okay.
An at-grade pool for a previously approved, you know, grading. You can add, add the words at grade.
I would incorporate spas too, but at grade would be sufficient.
I think our term pools encompass both spas, but not the pool cabanas.
Right, that would be restriction.
I have a question, Mr. Chair of Staff. You made comments, Bruce, related to the comments from the Pine Mountain Inn folks, that their issues really aren't, would not pertain to what's before us today, that they're dealing with issues related to their open space designation and their non-conforming use and that, you know, the, as I understood in my question earlier to the department as to the status on this, that they are certainly still in process of trying to and open to working with them to resolve the, those issues, but they're not really pertaining to what's before us today.
That's correct.
Okay. And then one other comment we received regarding other property that's in Ventu Park, that one questioning the notification issue, and if you would just, if you would, and it's in the report, but if you would just reiterate what the notification process was, that there are two thousand properties affected by this and the notification process was.
Oh, and in the case where you have over, I believe it's a thousand property owners, and I think in our case, we have about two thousand?
Right.
We have about two thousand property owners. In that case, the state allows local governments to run a one-eighth page legal ad in the paper, which is fairly noticeable. And that's what was done. In addition, in your packet, we have a list of organizations that were sent notification, as well as all the property owners that are being proposed to be rezoned from SHP to SRP were directly noticed as, per your board's past direction whenever we have a zone change of that nature.
Is there any grandfathering that would fall under, anything under this action before us today?
They are, by definition, any regulations that are in effect today don't affect already existing uses or structures. Any modification, however, would be subject to today's standards. Or actually, the effective date, which is thirty days from today if your board adopts the ordinance.
So, but we did get that final answer that this doesn't have, it's not going to have a material effect on what they're doing?
I don't believe so, no.
Are you talking about the Pine Mountain Inn?
Yeah.
No. What the Pine Mountain Inn needs is the request for a continuance of nonconforming beyond the period of amortization. And we have been working with them on that. We have contacted all five property owners that find themselves in this predicament. It is, their property was rezoned in the eighties to open space. They're applying commercial uses. This is the very same predicament that Mr. Bacali and The Halfway House and other people have found themselves in. There's a very simple section in the ordinance that you can come in for a planning director-approved continuance of nonconformity, which is what we've offered all five of them. So we fully expect all five to come in and apply for this process while they work through the end, the end use, what they can do. They either, I mean, need to change their zoning or apply for some historical designation for a permanent fix. But this is a, you know, a very good ten, fifteen-year fix while they can work through those other more complicated issues.
Okay, good, good. Appreciate that. All right. Any more discussion? Does she have something?
Go ahead.
Our county council pointed out, there is a, an ordinance, non-coastal zoning ordinance, Section eight, one-one-five dash three-point-four, that says, following a public hearing, the Board of Supervisors may approve, modify, or disapprove any planning commission recommendation regarding amendment requests, provided that any modification of the proposed ordinance or amendment by the Board of Supervisors not previously considered by the planning commission during its hearing shall first be referred to the planning commission for a report and recommendation, and the public hearing shall be continued to allow sufficient time for the planning commission to report back. The planning commission shall not be required to hold a public hearing thereon. Failure of the commission to report within forty days after such referral or within a period of time designated by the Board of Supervisors shall be deemed to be approval by the commission of the proposed modification. And here's the part that I think applies here. A modification shall be deemed, quote, "previously considered," unquote, if the modification of the proposed ordinance or amendment by the Board of Supervisors is based upon the issues and evidence initially heard by the planning commission. And the issue is whether the concept of exempting the pool from being part of the SRP is based, is whether that is based upon issues and evidence initially heard by the planning commission. The planning commission did hear staff's recommendation to exempt structures within a half mile, that aren't visible within a half mile. And based on that, in this general sense, I would think that since the pool, I don't really consider a structure, isn't visible in that area as well as probably as far away as six miles. You're not going to see this pool. I think that falls under that umbrella of something that the planning commission considered when they were looking at exemptions. So that's why I'm bringing this forward at this point. And so we would also include a finding that this does meet that section of the ordinance that deals with whether or not you'd have to send it to the planning commission so that they could just deal with this graded pool. they could just deal with this, uh, graded pool, uh, pools on graded paths. So with that, I would incorporate that into my motion that that does fall within this ordinance and also use the wording Ms. Bagley suggested regarding, um, that this is, uh, at grade, so it'd be where an at grade pool is to be constructed on a previously approved graded area.
Absolutely, yeah. I, um, we've got a number, number of comments to make. Number one, um, at least, at least my interest and involvement in this began with multiple times people in the Ojai Valley approached me about concerns with these bridge lines being, you know, significantly altered, um, and by, um, by housing developments that are going on there. Uh, and it wasn't just one person or one group, it, it happened over a number of months. Um, so I, I think it became clear to me that in the Ojai Valley, we were having a, a significant problem. Uh, and, um, that the goal here is that these scenic views, once they're lost, they're lost. Uh, you don't get these, these natural scenic views back, they're lost forever. And we have to obviously take action, uh, with, with appropriate respect for the property rights of the individual. If, if we don't do it that way, the law won't be legal anyway. But I come at this with a belief that, um, you know, we are every day reminded of how much we are living in a world where we're interdependent upon each other. And, um, you know, to, to build a silo and say, I don't care what the impacts are on everybody else, just is, works less and less in our interdependent world. And so, um, these scenic views are one of the things that significantly affects the quality of life in, in Ventura County. They are unique, um, and in Ventura County by comparison to many other places in Southern California. Uh, and we should be able to find ways to protect them and do it appropriately within the, the legal protections for people's property rights, et cetera. So that's why I originally supported moving forward, uh, was to try to do that and do that in particular in the Ojai Valley and at the same time Supervisor Parks pointing out that Vent, the Ventou, um, park area, the ridge there, uh, had a particular need and was under the similar kind of threat, which is how we got going on this. So, uh, staff, staff put together their report, um, and then, um, right after they put together their report, Pat Bagley, uh, approached, uh, with a number of concerns, uh, about staff's report. And, um, Pat has done, uh, great due diligence on lots of projects in the past. I've seen her work and I respect it tremendously. And so I, I took all of this very seriously, tried to track this all through the Planning Commission and, and all the way up to this, this hearing. Um, at, at this hearing today, I think it's a recognition that when you try to do things with, in land use, you almost invariably, um, it's a complicated field. It's a complicated field because you're trying to balance, uh, the public's interest with the interest of the private landowners. You're trying to do that legally. It's a little bit like campaign finance reform. Everybody goes, why is it so complicated? Well, it's complicated because you have to balance all these things and if you want to accomplish something, you have to put in other protections, et cetera. Um, so I think even the, some of the speakers that were here today, some felt like this may affect their property and the Pine Ridge, uh, area. And it's all understandable because, uh, uh, that's how these land use things, you know, get tangled up. Fundamentally, are, I start with this question, are our current policies adequate? And in the Ojai Valley, with, if you look at the Ojai Valley twelve years ago and you look at the Ojai Valley today, I don't think there's any question, you'd answer the question, no, they're not adequate. We're gradually losing more and more and if we don't do something, we'll have a real problem. Um, and I'm not as familiar with Ventou Park, but it's certainly the impression that, that I have in terms of what's going on in Ventou Park. So, not adequate right now. Then the question is, is this policy here an improvement over what we have? And in my mind, the bigger question is, is this policy combined with the second phase that's going to come out next spring, going to give us something better than where we are today? And I am always concerned and I always want to take seriously when people point out, ah, bet you're not catching this or that, the wording, the devil's in the details and it is important. And that's why, um, I've spent considerable time checking out all of the issues and I really appreciate, now, Pat, very detailed, you know, this sentence is a change and this is what I think is a problem, et cetera. Um, so it made it easier to be able to check that out rather than somebody showing up here for the first time, you know, right, as we're getting ready to vote and go, hey, there's this problem and, and trying to digest that. While I have great respect, um, for the issues that, that you've raised, Pat, I come down on, I, I just respectfully disagree. Um, I overall, I think this moves us forward to, uh, a, a more appropriate protection of the dwindling scenic ridge lines that we have, particularly in the Ojai Valley at this point in time. And this, this is primarily focused on Ventura and Ventou and, and, and the Ojai Valley, uh, because that's where these scenic overlay zones have been and certainly that's where Phase Two will, will focus his time. So, uh, while, um, while I'm always open to try to pay attention and catch a, a problem if we see it, at this point in time, I think that, that, that this thing is an improvement. So then I get to the second issue and that's the issue of whether we should delay. Um, and, um, uh, I just, I don't believe it's a weakening of the policy. I don't believe that the CUP PD issue, uh, overall becomes a weakening because it's a PD, more things are, are covered, you know, you're going away, as, as Mr. Smith talked about, you're not just talking about the grading, you're talking about the structures, et cetera. Um, uh, PD, uh, and so is delay appropriate at this point in time? Um, and I know there were, were two issues. One today, uh, um, uh, and I'm sorry to use a familiar Pat all the time, but I'm very familiar with Pat, but Ms. Bagley for, for the formal, um, raised, you know, delayed us for ninety days. I know earlier there was a question about should, you know, we should do an EIR on this whole, uh, thing. Um, and, um, so, um, I, maybe somebody else raised that issue, but I don't think delay is, is, uh, is the appropriate step at this point in time. We still have Phase Two that we have to get to. We have a limited amount of resources that we've been able to devote to this. Um, and, um, we, it is difficult to move things forward. This feels like the appropriate time, uh, to move forward with that. I know we've got a gray area on the issue of the pool and the exception that Supervisor Parks, uh, just read into the record and I appreciate County Council sort of, I think, probably instructing her that if you want to do it, you've got to make sure you read that, that into the record. I know we did that once before recently also. Um, and I, I, on that one, I just try to come down with, uh, with a common sense analysis. If we're going to make the exception, right? Um, is it, is it reasonable under this, under this exception? As long as it is pools at grade level on previously graded lots, um, I don't think that that's, uh, I, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, but I wouldn't oppose, uh, oppose that one, to keep this moving forward. Because part of, of good government is, is, uh, is at some point in time, you know, being able to move. And we have waited a long time to get the funding. I had these early meetings with people in the Ojai Valley many, many years ago and we couldn't move because we didn't have the funding. We finally got the funding. Um, and we've been over a year now and, a year and four months since we got that original approval of funding for this. And this is all that's happened in a year and four months. I shouldn't say all, it's a lot of work, but I mean, this is the first time, uh, uh, an actual definitive take action step has come to us in a year and four months and we still have the second half to come. All of that, I think, makes me weigh on the common sense side, we should move with this and, um, appreciate the fact that overall we will have much better protection. So, thank you for being patient with my, um, lengthy comments about that, but it's a complicated issue.
Let me make a comment on one thing you had said, that the, um, the Ojai Valley twelve years ago looked different, right? And now you can say it is much different now. I think the only thing different as I drive through there would be their homes on the hills, right? Well, the only, the problem I have with that is what we're talking about here is trying to take away those rights for those people to put their homes on their hills. I mean, that's really what we're saying. We'd love to have those, I mean, sure, if it was a natural, um, uh, you know, national forest or something and all that was left, that'd be great. But I still have this hard time about it, us getting so restrictive and taking those property rights from people. I mean, I don't know how to, this is that balancing act you're talking about. How do you balance? Is it the idea that it would look better in those hills if the houses were half the size? Would it be, I mean, those, I, I still think the idea is that people just said, I'd really like to see a natural hillside without homes. And I don't, that would have been fine if, if we had the ability to say to those people before you bought that, but now that you've come out and you spent millions of dollars to buy those lots up there and you want to build a nice home that you've saved all your life for, what are we going to say to them? That's my, that's my difficult problem with this. And this, like you said, this land use issue is a difficult.
Can I respond?
Sure, sure.
Great, thanks. Um, we're not saying you can't build on that ridge. We're, we're, we're not, we're not saying you can't build. And I think you already heard Mr. Smith say, if there was no place else to put your home, uh, you, you, we have to by law allow you to build that home on that plot. So I know you say some people, there are a lot of people that like to say, I'd like to have nothing there. I think probably most of us driving by would like to say it. But that is not what we're legally allowed to do and that's not what we're doing. But we are saying, and I can show you some pictures, and this, I think this conversation will be more, where's the balance will be when we get to the second phase. Correct me if I'm wrong, because that's when we will actually bring, what are these guidelines? This says there should be guidelines. And then the second phase will be, what are those guidelines? You know, where, you know, what's a ridge? You know, you know, what's the definition of a ridge and all of that stuff? But when that comes, I think it'll be very easy to show you. There's some real scars where, you know, literally it's like the top of the ridge was, was cut off, the, the, but it wasn't called the definition of ridge, but to everybody else, it's, it's a ridge. And a, and a huge white, you know, uh, home that just almost, you know, hurts your eyes as the sun bounces off of the thing, you know, all of those kind of things. So those kinds of things can happen. And that is where you say the balance is, we don't have the appropriate balance there. That person can be allowed to build there if they use natural colors, if they use common sense, and that's where I'd go back, common sense, to try to minimize their impact for the benefit of the overall public. And that is how you, we have protected some of the great places, not by buying the land, but when you drive down Highway One, when you, lots of, lots of great views have been protected just by common sense. We're not going to take your rights away and say you can't do anything. We're going to say, you've got to be sensitive, uh, at the same time that we have to be sensitive to your right to build. And that, and then when we're in the second one, I think we'll have more of that conversation.
It should be interesting, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, I should go back to my agenda or current item and see that somebody's made a motion.
Yeah, I did go ahead and make a motion and, uh...
And I second it.
And, thank you. As mentioned by, uh, one of the speakers, this, the ridge in Ventou Park really is the predominant geological feature in the southern vescap of Thousand Oaks and, and we are seeing, uh, primarily unincorporated homes up there that just stick out like sorghums because they're very big, there's no setback. And when I found that the scenic resource protection has no measures for structures, no, no kind of guidance for what kind of structures or how big or where they are, you know, that, that gave me a lot of concern. So I'm glad we're moving forward. I hope we're moving forward with this and I think, uh, will, um, it will definitely have a positive impact in our community. The city of Thousand Oaks has a nice ridge line protection measures. They've done a lot of the homework, which I think will make it easier for staff identifying where the ridge lines are. So I, I'm, I'm confident that with this, we will be able to complement what we have already there and be consistent with the Thousand Oaks area plan, which is important.
All right. Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm just going to say that I'm going to vote no on this only till I can, not, not that I don't appreciate all the work you've done, but I want to see what the second step is before we do this, because I hate to move, once you approve something, it's pretty hard to get rid of things. And so I'm just going to, I'll wait on, on that. All right? So we, uh, we'll vote? Is it coming?
Yes, well, it's going on, so, but it's right now, it's, uh, three to, uh, one vote, Supervisor Ford.
All right, all right. So it's, uh, three to one. So I think it, it didn't require a four-fifth, so that passes. All right, then we'll, we'll look forward to next year sometime, right? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the good discussion.
I, I appreciate everybody showing up today. This was a complicated issue and I know, hopefully you got educated on it, some just like we did.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, I think that's all of our session, uh, stuff. Now we're going to go back into closed session. Do we have some, maybe I noticed that we're going to come back and, we do. We'll come back and, you don't want them to stay for the next hour or two.